Okay, I'd like to hear it.
Okay, um, good evening, everybody. At this time, I'd like to have the roll call for the regular Dexter Plan Association meeting for the month of May.
Kova.
Present.
Marsh.
Here.
Phillips. Your expenses. Healy. Here. Roberts. Derek. Hardy.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hubber. Your. Kowalski.
Here.
Burgerly. Your. Weizner. Yeah. Um, the V votes.
Yep, exactly. Right, thank you. At this time, we have some, when moved the minutes, the action on the regular minutes from July 11. Boo Roberts is there, support?
I'm sorry.
For, sorry, okay, E B versus support, E B. Any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes? See, not all.
I can get my computer, but it's only a couple of spots that I need something to fix. Maybe. Two more. Yeah.
Oh, the ones that were, uh, so was that a correction or a point?
Well, I think it could be a correction.
Right.
But I think.
Um, I think we're talking about the change.
Yes.
There seems to be a parenthesis. I didn't put this in color, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think the sentence is fine. I know it's plain weather self storage was not on the agenda for tonight's planning session. And on page six, Michelle, right below, the commissioner's briefly discussed the filing before voting on motion, the first bullet. Okay. Just take off the, uh, that second line. It probably doesn't really be good. Thank you.
Yeah, good catch. Thank you. Okay, um. The, who made your, Roberts, uh, we amended the minutes that, good, in the support, E B, you give it back. All right, all in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye. Aye. Close. None? It's approved. All right, moving right along, approval of the agenda for tonight with somebody with the agenda, please. Give me the bill.
Sister.
Uh, support Roberts. Any changes to the agenda? Uh, roll call, vote on the agenda, please. Or no, actually, sorry, all in favor of the agenda as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Close. None? Okay. Agenda is approved. Moving right along, public hearings. We have four scheduled public hearings for tonight. Um, the first public hearing will be on the Pelham Plant Unit Development. That is a preliminary site plan review. Uh, so at this time, first, we're going to have an applicant introduce the project and give us a high-level overview.
You want to introduce it as it's written?
Oh, then read the whole? Yeah, for the benefit of the public, thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing to consider the Pelham Plant Unit Development Site Plan, preliminary site plan, for 28-unit multifamily condo development project at 8180 Grant. It's our 8180 Main Street. The applicant is Pelham LLC, Kelly Anderson, resident agent and property owner.
Yep.
No, 76 properties LLC represented by Nate Powell. There we go. Now we got all.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, Michelle. Okay, at this time, then, would the applicant like to step forward, please, and give us a little background on your project? And can introduce yourself again, of course?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Uh, my name is Jeff Mahaney. I'm here to represent the ownership group. Uh, there's three of us in total here today. Kelly Anderson, uh, who's raised, uh, lives in Ann Arbor, also owns a lake house in Patterson. Um, and Josh Bloom, uh, Bloom Construction is also a local contractor. Uh, the three of us have been lucky enough to work together now for a number of years. Our first development was in Ann Arbor. It was just successfully completed. It's, it's East Summit in Carrington. So, uh, very interesting project and what we thought was a sort of great addition to that neighborhood, uh, as that neighborhood's transitioning. Along with us today as well is, uh, Joe, our civil engineer. If anybody has more specific questions, he's done a lot of work for us on this last proposal. Uh, so we encourage anybody to ask questions of Joe as needed. Um, I just want to thank everybody again for being here. Um, many of the faces we know, we've heard from you. We've gotten great comments, great feedback. The community, we've got a number of letters with great support. Nate's been a great support to us in helping us, um, work on this project and he's so gracious and kind of helping us through the process. So we're really, really happy to be here again. Now that we've made some revisions, we've heard what you had to say. We've tried to come back with some very responsible, um, answers to your questions and look forward to the process moving forward. I think it's real important that I speak to everyone. Not everyone was here over the past couple of meetings that we've had. Uh, but we really did hear what you had to say. I think we were at one point looking at three buildings. We really looked at it again and we thought about it. Uh, and it's really, it doesn't make sense to have three buildings on that site. It's very difficult to make it work. It's very difficult to make it work and feel like it fits in the community. And so for us, we were able to make it work with two structures. So, um, in addition to lessening the number of buildings on the property, we also took into consideration especially the walk along the creek. Many were concerned about the height, especially because you're lower from that perspective. And it is a very important viewpoint. So we were able to renegotiate the location of the buildings. Really felt like we've created relief as you walk along the creek and along the street level, so that the buildings no longer sort of create this canyon effect or a vertical, uh, element that is continuous and maybe a little less friendly, I would say. The height of the building as well, we have dropped. Originally, we were trying to work with the existing grates, uh, because as a developer, we've got to be very, very careful about where we spend the money that goes into this project. And we didn't want to have too much manipulation of the, of the land. Uh, we felt it was really important to be giving our best go on bringing the structure, the height of structure down. So we were able to do that by dropping it six feet down into the existing grade on the property. So essentially a half-story. So the only place where you see that lower level is where you enter the garage, um, for the residences, for the property. We listened to a number of the other comments. At one point, we were talking about the possibility of having some sort of path on our side of, of creek. It just didn't make sense because of the building locations. Um, and we really want to try to keep the edge of the creek as natural as possible. Our rendering show the kind of current vegetation that's there. Obviously, it's not even healthy for all the vegetations that is there to remain. So we will be going in and thinning things out and creating window views between the creek and, um, and the condominiums. But we're not looking to clear that hill. We're not looking to expose the entire building. We really feel like the existing landscape, both of the backdrop at the railroad tracks as well as the creek, that we try to maintain a lot of that sort of natural foliage. It allows for our buildings to feel a little bit more at home. So it's really important to us. As far as parking is concerned, we were able to get the majority of our parking under the buildings in the lower level by dropping it that half-story. We do have some additional parking on, um, on the property itself. We really felt it was important for deliveries or guests who come to visit that they not necessarily have to drive around and find street parking, that there would be sufficient parking for them there. We feel like we've done it in a responsible way. We're looking to really have the property feel like a true residential neighborhood, um, with street lamps, lighting, um, pathways on the property. So, um, it's going to be fairly special in that it's not just a condominium. There's substantial amount of land that's left for people to enjoy and to see and to feel, um, and not feel as if we've taken up every inch for our, for our buildings. I think the materials on the building have changed a bit since our last presentation with, with all of you. And once again, thinking about mass, thinking about color, texture, we decided to change the materials a little bit more, using darker colors, um, some natural brick tones, and then also stepping back that top floor, the sort of top units that sit along the top. Um, once again, just giving your eye the opportunity to sort of see the different undulations of the building, the change in materials, a little softer on your eyes, so easier to, um, sort of take in. As far as the process moving forward, we're really excited to be here. Our team is only interested in doing developments that fit, we feel like fit in a community and something the community is looking for. Um, we take our jobs very seriously. Um, and we really only do this one at a time. That's what we do. We're not doing these all over the country or even for that matter, all over the state. So, uh, we're excited for the process. We appreciate the support. We're here to answer any questions and honestly, um, looking forward to just meeting more and more people in the community. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Then I'll cut you back after questions later. Is there anybody else from the applicant team at this time or otherwise? Nope, I'm seeing anyone. I guess so. The consultant reports, I don't know, Megan, do you want to go first and?
Hi, Megan Nasenak from Carlisle Workman Associates. We're the planning consultants for the city. Just a few facts about the site. Um, so everyone, to let everyone know, it's a 1.5 state, 1.578 per site at 8180 Main. And it's proposing in two buildings to construct 28 multifamily units, um, with three-bedroom units and two-bedroom units. The site is right next to the bioduct, um, across the creek from Mill Creek Park North. Um, and it's a triangular site. Um, that, and just sort of when notice that a roundabout is proposed to be constructed at that intersection in the next few years. Um, and that's on the Washington County Road Commission's, um, list. There's been a number of changes since this development was before you for conceptual review. Um, as the applicant indicated, they increased the number of buildings from three buildings to two. The number of proposed dwelling units went from 33 to 28. The location of the buildings has changed and before a side yard waiver was needed, it's no longer needed. The parking lot has been reconfigured. Um, the parking spaces are no longer in the required front yard. And the entrance from Main Street now has a better sense of place. The interior parking before was on the ground floor. Now, as the applicant said, that it's, uh, half floor below. The number of parking spaces increased from 53 spaces to 56. Um, there's a landscape area proposed with trails, rain gardens, and benches, the area between the back of the buildings and Mill Creek. And the dumpster has been moved to the front yard in the southwest corner of the site. I'm going to hit highlights in my review because it's very lengthy, um, but just want to give you some aspects, um, in terms of things that we feel it's important um, when looking at this application tonight. Number one, this is designated in the future land use plan as village commercial. Um, and the designation calls for encompassing neighborhoods adjacent to the downtown, which are transitioning from single-family to a mix of uses primarily commercial, but which are complementary to transitioning neighborhoods. And that designation plans for a transition between mixed-use districts. Um, in that village commercial future land use category, three- to five-story buildings, multiple-family buildings are listed as appropriate. There are a number of goals that also speak to this application. I just want to highlight two. Number one is the natural features goal, which says the city wants to protect and maintain the city's natural resources, particularly the Huron River and the Mill Creek areas. Also, the housing wall, which aims to provide a desirable residential environment with diverse housing options for city residents. One thing we also wanted to flag, um, in terms of the natural resources is that there is significant rate changes here. Um, going up the embankment, you have a flat area, and then you have steep slopes going down to the Mill Creek area. And a lot of our review centers around that, steep slopes. Also, another thing that we wanted to highlight for you tonight are the soils. This is, was previously developed land. Um, it was gum-rained. There was some environmental cleanup. Um, and she, uh, the site plan says it's foxy sand long and slow, sloughed linsols are the style, are the soil type shown. However, when you go on the, when you look at the site plan and the, and the survey on the Mill Creek side, then the designation of what is there in terms of soils changes, and it says that it's filter, broken concrete, poison ivy, Virginia creeper, construction debris, prickly ash, wild raspberry, wild green vines. This is nothing unusual for a site like that. However, there's probably certain challenges in terms of building on it and also building buildings of this size because the building corners are sitting on the edge of that Mill Creek bank. And that was one of the concerns that we flagged in our review. Also, um, one of the things in terms of the building location and site design is there's phase one and phase two. Phase one's the building towards the back. So this is a very prominent location. And again, we talked about this in conceptual review. Would be interesting what happens during phase, between phase one built and phase two being built. What does that look like? How is that maintained at that point? The applicant is asking for, um, a number of waivers. Um, some are such as the front buildout, the ground floor height. Those are due to, those are form-based regulations that anticipate the building facing smack in front of the street. So that the buildings on sidewalk, just like downtown, um, or some other places that you have on Grand Street, where maybe there's a little bit of a yard in front. You can tell by the orientation of the site, again, triangular. They've done a great job of orienting the buildings kind of in a pod and creating a, a front yard area and then a backyard area facing Mill Creek. But the front buildout is probably not feasible with this design, nor is the ground floor height. Um, so in looking at that, we feel that those waivers are, are likely appropriate. They're also asking for a building height waiver. Um, you, the planning commission, need to just start to determine whether that in terms of location, size, density, is not detrimental to the adjoining districts. And you have the public facility zoning district on one side, and then you have a single-family residential over the embankment, um, to the other. Um. The applicant's provided some elevation diagrams and some for you tonight at your table, so that will speak to some of the things that we said in our review. In terms of traffic impact, um, the 28 residential units proposed, that correlates, the correlates to slightly more than 82 vehicle trips a day. Um, again, there will be roundabouts at this location. Um, so the other thing in terms of site access and circulation that we wanted to highlight for you, number one, are two waivers. One, they're asking for a waiver on the sidewalk and the street frontage per your zoning ordinance that, that in this district, sidewalks should run all the way down the frontage to the bioduct. Um, again, that's probably not feasible nor desired at this point. And also looking at sidewalks in front of all the building basades required by the zoning ordinance for building number one in the back, it doesn't make any sense to take that as they propose. It doesn't make any sense to make that sidewalk go all the way down into the corner, the back corner of the site. Um, we've recommended that there's some crosswalks be provided in the parking area and the driveway area so that fair degree access and pedestrian crossings can access in the back, um, where they, um, propose that open space area. They are asking for a parking waiver in terms of that they're above the maximum parking, the maximum parking would be 43 spaces. They're asking for 56. And then also their bicycle parking location are in bike storerooms, not hoops, as, as perceived by the ordinance. Um, the hoop, the storerooms are probably a more secure location than hoops. It's up to you to advise where you feel some bicycle hoops would be needed for guests. On landscaping, they requested a waiver in terms of street trees. They need to provide seven between proposed and preserved. There's six. Um, they're asking for some dispensation due to the floodplain, the dry liquid, and that future roundabout. Um, and also there is, um. There's a parking lot waiver, um, and then parking lot trees, and also, um, they've asked for a waiver for adjacent single-family residential. As you know, the train and maintenance is between the site and the single-family residential, so whatever landscaping they put up on the site wouldn't necessarily affect. We flagged in the, in the review that there are a couple of invasive species and given some recommendations on what to be swapped out. The main thing I wanted to highlight for you is the Mill Creek, the Mill Creek banks were into planting because there was a discrepancy between what was in the rendering and what was on the landscape plan. The landscape plan showed that there wasn't going to be anything preserved on that bank until the breeder of the property. Um, the rendering showed something quite different. Um, so thank you for clarifying that. And then also, um. In terms of that rendering option, we recommended some shrubs and bushes that could go in there that can help with the bank stabilization and those natural features, um, and enhancing that. I also want to note that anything that's in the floodplain will need to be approved by E B. On the dumpster location, technically, that is in the front yard. You can grant a waiver P to D on that. Normally, you do not allow dumpsters in the front yard, or if you look at this unique site, that's probably the best place for it and one of the least visible ones, if you think about it, back by that train and trade, by, by the embankment, right before, um, the roadway goes into the bioduct. Also, there are a number of waivers for exterior elevations and floor plans. Again, these are because the Formes Code looked for that building to be right there next to the sidewalk, and now they're, they're at angles due to, due to the site. So it's not necessarily able for every building to have their primary entrance fronting the public road. Also, that maximum uninterrupted facade is required to be 30 feet. We estimate that they're approximately 32 when they're facing the Mill Creek Park. Um, also, there's a first-floor transparency requirement at 30%. Those transparency requirements weren't provided, but we estimate that they're very close or just slightly below. They're, they're just slightly below. You've got a number of P U D qualifications. That's really your standard for tonight. Um, we've let, we, in our review, said that the proposal demonstrates five of the required design requirements, redevelopment of Grayfield site, because this was a Redevelopment of a grayfield site because this was a formerly developed site and then it was, has an environmental cleanup. Extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements. The property has difficult shape, difficult site conditions due to the shape of the parcel, the topography and the abutting railroad embankment. Also mitigation of off-site impacts and public facilities by bringing city water to the site. That's one of the public benefits. And also significant use of sustainable design features, including a rain garden. They've demonstrated innovation in land use and excellence in design. They've also looked to have long-term preservation of natural resources. With the proposed rain garden and the preferred, preserved vegetation. However, those, that stabilization of the Mill Creek bank is important. We've also asked in our reviews for a geotechnical to look at those soils. One was provided in the packet that was for another proposal down the site. And I'll defer to this challenge of engineer to go into any details about that. Another standard is to achieve economy in land use, natural resources, energy for provision and public services, provides adequate housing, employment and shopping opportunities, particularly suited to the needs of the city resident. This P U D proposes middle, missing middle housing that's a need that's been identified by the city. It's also proposing an extension of water service to the site. That would also provide water access to neighboring sites and help with the, with the city's infrastructure. We don't feel like this would have a negative impact. But a determination of the compliance with that qualification really is subject to the review of a geotechnical report and stabilization of the Mill Creek bank. Another standard is that the development should not result in a negative, in a, in a reasonable negative economic impact on surrounding properties. We don't feel like it would result in an unreasonable negative impact. More likely the extension of city services would help many of the properties that were adjacent. However, Westridge residents have expressed concern about that impact of the proposed buildings on their property. And so that's one thing to look at tonight, and I'm sure you may hear some more info about that. Finally, one of the, the final standard I wanted to highlight for you is that the proposed use or usage shall be a location, size, density and character to be in harmony with the zoning district and the city of Dexter's master plan and should not be detrimental to adjoining units. Adjoining districts. We really feel that this can be in harmony. Some planning commissioners during the conceptual review, you have expressed concerns about height and the density and what was that impact on Mill Creek. And so one of the decisions for you tonight is to look at how the changes that the applicant has put forward, how those address those concerns. On project density, so before adoption of the form-based districts, you had formula, so many dwelling units per acre. But during that, during the master plan in two thousand and eighteen, it was decided that density should be really by the size of the buildings, the bulk, and restricted by that. Not a density per square, density per acre or square foot measure. Because quite frankly, in the downtown, in the village commercial, it's been very unbuilding. So you'll notice that this density calculation is different than before. So what was done is based on the sap, back and the lot coverage, we determined a certain lot area that was available. We took fifty percent of that out because in developing a site, you need to have parking, you need to have driveways, and you need to have stormwater. So that fifty percent is actually probably a generous amount. And then we estimated with a three-story building, that's what's allowed, that the, that fifty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six square feet can be built on the site. And they're proposing forty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-two. We did divide it by the number of units that were allowed as the minimum because when, once buildings are built, walls can be moved in that density per bedroom or per unit. So using that, we found that their, a density waiver was not needed. So what is needed is a height waiver. And that height waiver is, the building height is forty-eight feet, eight inches or four stories, when a minimum forty-five feet and three stories is required. So that's, that's the calculation to look at in terms of that. We've recommended that the applicant provide a number of things. There's a list of seven that are on page one oh one of your packet. We've also recommended that you make a delay on a recommendation on city council until you feel sufficient information is provided to make an informed decision on the building, location and site design and that Mill Creek landscaping and stabilization. If you do feel like you want to make a recommendation tonight, we've listed some things where you need to make determinations. And also noted all the waivers that will be needed in those that are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next up, so Diffy Marcus.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, thanks Marcus.
Yes. Okay. Our report is in the packet as well. We'll start out with water main. Megan touched on a lot of these in her report. We will need to extend public water main to the site for fire service and domestic service. The appropriate way to do that is basically to connect along the frontage between East Ridge and Alpine. The plan that they submitted includes a connection across country from West Ridge under the railroad tracks. That alignment's not acceptable, just for long-term maintenance access. And also, it's, it's a dead-end main which wouldn't have sufficient fire flow. So that needs to be updated on the, the next set of drawings. We had a question about fire suppression. I think that was just maybe left off of the line work, but the buildings, what, as I understand it, will need to be suppressed. The sanitary sewer, it's a rather minor comment. Existing public sewer in the road is in the intersection that turns from Dexter Chelsea to the north. I think everybody's aware there's an upcoming roundabout project which is going to change the intersection geometry. So for this stage of the game, the applicant has acknowledged that they've, they have a preliminary plan that addresses our concerns. We're just making note that final design is going to need to be coordinated as well their entrance geometry with the roundabout project. Oh, we had two comments related to stormwater. One was probably just a little housekeeping item of some labeling and cross-section details for the infiltration or rain gardens they're proposing. The second was a little more impactful, I guess I'd say, the, during preliminary discussions that the applicant, we talked about the, the site's proximity to Mill Creek and the value from a more regional perspective of actually detaining and releasing, you know, a ten or a hundred-year storm at a reduced rate. There is little value to that just because of the site's direct discharge to the, to the creek. So in order to, what, what we had asked them is if we're going to allow deviation from the published standards for detention, we want to see, you know, go above and beyond with the treatment, the, the water quality in the first flush treatment. So the calculations they have in the, in the plans, basically, they follow the county standards, is, I'm not surprised that they did, but, and, and essentially size that, that pre-treatment based on a calculation that assumes there's downstream detention. So that's not the case here. So they'll need to look at that. And they may need some bigger areas or, you know, different geometry of those infiltration areas to, to account for that. So that could impact the site layout and landscaping. For circulation and access, this is, this frontage is actually under jurisdiction of Washington County. As I mentioned, there's, they have an upcoming roundabout project. The county has indicated they're going to require a traffic impact study so that they can understand exactly the impact of this proposed development and make sure that the roundabout design accommodates it. So that's something that we suggested the applicant coordinate with the county directly. And then I think the last circulation item is, is a little unclear on the plans. Exactly how it was going to be. The fire access on the north side, which would be emergency access only, I would assume. We're just asking for some clarification on how that would be signed or if there'd be different use of hardscape materials or other things that could be done to make sure that it doesn't get utilized for anything other than emergency access. Megan did talk about the slope stabilization, so we, we agree with that comment. We need a little more, more information. A previous soil analysis was performed. That was assuming different parameters because it was a different project. So we would agree with Megan that the, that's fine to have that as reference material, but they need to supplement that report with the specifics of their project, the location of the proposed buildings, the depth of the foundations, et cetera. So an updated report that is specific to their proposal, it will be needed. And that concludes my report. I will be around for any questions.
Hey, Marcus? Okay, fire?
Ed, who's the chief on one?
Okay, Chuck. There we go.
Chief Armstrong or Ed, are you going to give the report?
Is, is the chief on? I'm available if he's not here.
He's not saying anything.
He's not saying anything, so please go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, so like Marcus said, some of our concerns was just the e-dress to that phase-one building, the sprinkler systems, and then just more or less e-dress throughout the entire site of the two locations of the buildings.
Yeah, that's, we need one that much more. That's good for now. We'll, we'll have additional questions if we, if we need. Thank you. Okay, so Michelle, our staff center, please.
Okay, okay. I will go with the same things that Megan has. I think she did a really good job, so did Marcus and Ed, explaining what their concerns are and how they relate to the ordinance. Excuse me. So let's get into the things that are the, the process and the decision you've got to make. The preliminary, for instance, P U D qualifications. Megan had pointed out that she had found four or five. I've identified those on here for you. The, the ordinance requires that of these thirteen different qualifications, you need to plot, you need to determine that at least three have been demonstrated. In, as far as the innovative design, the, in terms of layout, structures, et cetera. Like the applicant has said, they keep the parking underground, takes the height off. They angled the buildings to create more of a common area, if you will, between the two buildings. And completely eliminated the third, so it is a more creative, almost sense of place neighborhood feel than it was previously. But ultimately, the planning commission's going to need to determine if the design and layout that they've provided meets this criteria. Section nineteen oh one three are the unifying design elements. They're proposing landscaping, pedestrian walks and pathways as those unifying elements. It's going to be up to you to determine if they've demonstrated that. The long-term protection and preservation of the natural resources. Megan went through a number of them, the concerns regarding how the bank is treated. Is it, is it going to be completely, the vegetation removed? Some of those spill soils removed as well, and different types of soils put in in order to stabilize the buildings. And if so, what are the types of landscaping? There were a number of landscape materials that were identified that are invasive, but the applicant's going to need to change and provide substitutes for it. But ultimately, planning commission again is going to have to make those determinations. I won't continue to go through all of them for you, just some of the main ones. The unreasonable negative impacts or lots of historic structures. There aren't any historic structures on the site, but the, the entire project is influenced by the historic railroad viaduct. And that has been incorporated into their architecture for the buildings. It's again, a determination how planning commission is going to have to make. You have the unreasonable negative impact on surrounding properties. This is a unique situation where you've got the creek and a park across the creek. You've got a commercial across, across the road to the south. And you've got residential on the other side of a railroad viaduct. We did some extensive research to see how projects, in this particular case, a multiple-family housing project impacts adjacent single-family homes. The National Housing Conference identified that one of the most common challenges that property owners articulate is they worry about how a project like this would impact their property values. A lot of times it's felt that it would be negative impact. Despite those concerns, N H C notes, evidence doesn't support those concerns. And there's even a study in Harvard that demonstrates single-family homes and their close multiple-family buildings such as this actually appreciate even value. And then the University of Wisconsin-Madison, their community economic development division, their extension, residential developments in downtown is, is really beneficial. It helps generate that constant flow and footprint that's needed to support downtown businesses. By incorporating higher density of residents in a downtown mix, the amount of activity increases, this in turn creates a more vibrant, desirable downtown pattern. Ultimately, the planning commission's going to have to determine, does this project meet the criteria to be a P U D? And then of course, you've got harmony with the zoning and the master plan, all of which Megan has gone over. And the plan, in professional opinion, does meet that, but it's going to be the planning commission's job to determine that. There's been a lot said by Megan as well as Marcus regarding the need for a geotechnical, so I won't say more on that. Likewise with springback. What I will tell you is there are sixteen different concerns regarding determinations or additional information that are needed on or by a site plan. Excuse me. Things from front buildouts, ground floor heights, building heights, sidewalk frontage, parking, landscaping, the dumpster enclosure, exterior elevations. Those are the first-floor transparency, sidewalks in front of buildings. Those are the things that are determinations that you make based on zoning ordinance requirements. And does the P U D, as, as it could qualify, do they, does it rise to the level of being able to have those regulations deviated from? The bike hoops, there's gas, there is no gas parking. So the staff is recommending that that can be made to not be made. One of those that people were coming and visiting by boat have a place to put their bikes. We've already heard from Marcus and Megan about the traffic impact study. Although a, a development of this studies doesn't rise to the level that a, a traffic impact study is required at, at our end. As Marcus said, because this is where you have a roundabout, the Washington County ordinance is exercising that right. Marcus has already gone over his different comments and concerns. I'll update a few things for DAFD. Their, their comments were made, as it pertains to extra fire hydrants, based on the, the layout that was shown in the plan. Since that layout for the water line is going to be different, there may be two different locations that are needed in more than one hydrant. So the revised plan will help in some way. One thing that the, the fire department, I didn't have this conversation with chief. And that's the area between the two buildings where you've got those little steps going down into a little plaza before you go out toward the. Top of the bank. If those instead of being steps could be more of a graduated ramp, that way the fire trucks, if there's ever emergency response that's needed. At that area of the buildings, they'd be able to do that. I outlined all your determinations. As we recall, the, the use, multiple family use is a. Required special name use, so I've identified all of those. All those criteria can be met, provided that. The determinations are made by you and you're satisfied with the plan that's specified. Staff did inform the, the applicant that, that. I didn't feel the plan was ready for action. If I can't give you a succinct list of. Conditions on which to take action, that it would be better to identify. The issues with the plan give clear direction on how it can be revised so that they could come back with a revised plan. So in your packet, you have a recommendation for postponement. The only thing that staff would ask is that if you feel that there is sufficient information that's been provided. You're able to make your determinations tonight so that the applicant, when you do the revised plan, has clear direction on those. You can answer any questions if you'd like.
Thank you. Probably have some questions. Okay, so at this time. We have all our consultants, so at this time we will open up the public hearing for members of the public. Please step forward, state, we'll take in person, I guess, first, and then we'll go around, we have some virtual participants as well, so. Step forward, state your name and address, and comments are limited to three minutes of us. Thank you. Oh yes, and we will have a kind of a warning before, after this. Yes, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Westphal, living at thirty-two seventy-four East Ridge Drive. The purpose of me being here tonight is to express my concerns about an adamant objection to. The now two five-story condo towers on Main Street. At five stories, and yes, I heard four and a half, but we're still five. These would be the tallest structures in Dexter. These proposed fifty-foot eyesores would overlook the backyards of the residents in the West Ridge neighborhood. How would you all feel if? Two fifty-foot observation decks were built only a few feet away from your home? Many of which were recently constructed by your fellow residents with the expectation of some semblance of price. Let's face it, this parcel of land was never intended to be a zone for such a development. Because of this fact, we ask that you deny this rezoning. This small parcel of land has been zoned village commercial for many years and for good reason. The Dexter zoning ordinance, and I believe it's section eleven point zero five, reads that all DC buildings can span a maximum of three stories. Moreover, zoning mandates that they must be, I'll quote here, harmonious with the historic scale and nature of other structures in the vicinity. Standing five stories tall, these towers would certainly not be harmonious with other buildings in the area. And as a lot of you know, changing the zoning to a PUD is essentially a blank check for the developer. We ask this board to follow the rules that. All of these taxpaying citizens live by. Next is safety. At a May City Commission meeting, it was talked about that Dexter did not have adequate fire. Trucks, ladder trucks to access five-story condo towers. This has not been addressed. Moreover, this development is slated for at least sixty bedrooms. I heard twenty-eight units, two and three bedrooms. Sixty bedrooms to be built at the busiest and most bottlenecked part of Dexter. It is unsafe to add this many cars to this area. Now proponents of these towers might say that they're only one story taller than the Jeffords building in downtown. Well, the Jeffords, that is zoned differently. And that is next to existing three-story buildings. Some might say that they're almost. In coordination with the library. The library is a two-story building from the road. It's not a freestanding four-story building. Leaders on this commission, you've been entrusted in your positions because we believe in you. To listen to our voices and rule appropriately when such matters arise. We're counting on you all to stand tall, lead courageously, and stop this project and its threats. Please deny this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Hold no applause, it's going to make the public hearing a lot longer, so we appreciate the support, but the next person, please approach the podium. You have three minutes.
Sad that I won't have applause. My name is Peter Bar. I live at three-two-seven-seven East Ridge Drive. I'm joined here by my eldest son Nicholas. Can you raise your hand, please? My wife and our three other children are home now. Thank you for your service on the commission. I know that this comes with a lot of. Bar, B-A-H-R. Thank you for your service on the commission. I'm really grateful for your time and your willingness to assist the residents. Property is an extraordinarily valuable resource, a finite resource of the community. All of you know that really better than anyone. The present proposal to develop condo towers at eight-one-eight-zero Main Street reflects an investment. Of resources in potential future residents of the city, and I do appreciate why that may have some value. But as a current resident of the city, my family and I would ask the planning commission to reconsider this proposal. Michelle describes this as a unique situation, and I thought that was just the perfect word. I rewrote my notes as I was sitting there because it exactly. Caught the idea that I was striving for. It's unique because it is squarely in the center of our beautiful little city, but much more than that. It's squarely in the center of the park, trail, creek and river system that thousands have worked to create over such an incredibly long period of time. Therefore, we ask the commission to reconsider this project and choose to invest this incredibly precious land resource. Right in the center of what we work so hard to create in a way that adds to the work of so many, adds to the gem of the Dexter downtown. The current residents need reasons to come downtown. We need more paths. We need a reason to be there, to use the paths, to interact with other residents, to create and recreate. The Dexter community. For that, we need more community spaces, not more condos or more apartments. So you can imagine a space that is an extension of our existing Mill Creek Park. It has public seating, it has trees, it has a player, it has access to the creek. It is literally a sixty-second walk. From across, from Mill Creek Park. So this could be an extension of what we work to create, and as it stands now, it actually will detract from that, and that's nothing really for the current residents. If folks want to build apartments, there's plenty of spaces to do that. It does not need to be in this precise location, in this very, very unique space with unique considerations. So I ask the commission to reconsider, and I thank for your time.
Thank you.
So my name is Kurt Krupski, and I live at eighty-nine fifty-three Island Lake Row. K R U P S Q I. Although I've only been a resident of Dexter Township for ten, I'm just under ten years. I've been coming here as long as the original Mill Creek Sportsman's Center, when Fred Tross. Used to hang out there on opening gun season in Michigan Outdoors for sale. Okay, I was there, all right? So I don't think they understand what's in that property. Because there, it's a landfill. There's tons of concrete. But from a resident's point of view, my point to you is, I'm not going to discuss the details. I think this gentleman, the guy behind me did a great job. We're ruining the character of Dexter. And I'm asking you, please, I'm, I'm all about development. We can handle development, but we need to do it. That addresses and complements our city. And things like the Holiday Inn Express behind the Hackney Hardware Store is not what we're looking for. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Tyra, seven-eight two-five Walsh Row. I'm taking. T Y R E. Not a public speaker, but I just wanted to come out and say that I work with people that live in La Bonia and Canton, and they come to Dexter because our downtown is not. It's just an oasis. And if you look around, cities everywhere, they're doing this. They're building these condos and. It's just, when you go downtown, it already feels filled and filled of beautiful, peaceful land. I just think that building those condos will, like what everybody said, will ruin. You mentioned you don't want to build anywhere that a community that is not, is not needed or wanted, and I feel like. A lot of people feel that way. If you look around, what all the cities are doing, they're all doing that. So I just. Request that you pause and leave Dexter the oasis that it is for not only Dexter residents, but everybody around. I've always been taught you don't just complain, you offer a solution. I don't have my MBA, I'm not a lawyer. But I don't know if it's like possible for the city of Dexter to purchase it and like charge the residents like a percent of their taxes and then we need to vote on what goes there or just some kind of a solution. Where we would all be in it together and not, and just get away from the developers who want to use here downtown.
Thank you.
I wouldn't like to speak, but I have, I have, I have mobility troubles, so it's hard for me to get up. Yeah, I need to get up.
Like this, I guess if you can just, if you can just speak loudly then, if you, if it's tough for you to get up then.
Yeah, it's hard for me to get out of this chair.
What we need.
I would like to say that I, I support.
Okay, we would need your name and address.
Oh, my name is Catherine Becker, and I live at thirty-two sixty-six Alpine Street. Very close to the proposed project, and I'd like to say that I support the idea of having extra housing, you know, additional residences. On that property. I'd like to see, obviously, design changes made to make it work better for the rest of. You know, the rest of the town, but I, I think that they could make this work. And I, I just wanted to come out and support them and continue to design something that does work. We need more housing in Dexter so that our children can live here. And future residents of this property would support the local downtown businesses. I'd like to make sure that there's a pedestrian access to the Mill Creek Park. But you know, these are all things that you, you handle when you're designing it, to design it appropriately. So I, I just want to say to the developers, don't give up, make it nice. So that's what I got to say.
Good, thank you. With the next speaker, I'd like to approach the podium, please. Your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jamie Griffin. I live at four-six-three Preston Circle. I do just want to note the agenda indicates that residents will have five minutes to speak, so I'll do my best. Given your judgment degree. My comments tonight address high-density development in our downtown, or generally with implications and considerations for both of the development proposals coming before you tonight. As described in the document itself, the city of Dexter master plan is the primary officially adopted document that sets forth an agenda for the achievement of goals and policies. It is a long-range statement of general goals and policies aimed at the unified and coordinated development of the city. That complements the goals of nearby governmental units wherever possible. It helps develop a balance of orderly change in a deliberate and controlled manner that permits controlled growth. As such, it provides the basis upon which zoning and land use decisions are made. Importantly, as noted in the master plan, the plan serves as an educational tool. And gives citizens, property owners, developers and adjacent communities a clear indication of the city's direction for the future. So that, that means the plan sets expectations for development in the city. And so, as noted in the master plan, we have the following goals: preserving the small town character of the city. Protecting and enhancing here on River and Mill Creek, protecting public views and access to Mill Creek, planning for and investing in recreation and local space. Creating sustainable use of existing public services. At the same time, the pace of high-density development in our downtown, in both across the nation, seems to be reaching a peak. We have the already approved Millennium Place. A three-story, twenty-three-unit development on Rand Street, the Palham are considerations tonight, Mill Creek flats, common sale thirty forty-five Broad Street redevelopment proposal. In total, it's seven new large format buildings totaling two hundred ninety-six additional units. Notably, these developments have all requested significant exceptions for a zoning ordinance as they have all been proposed or approved as planned due developments. That to me is strength. If the master plan is the basis upon which zoning and land use decisions are made, then the point of the master plan is to set expectations regarding development. What kind of message are we sending? To residents and developers regarding development in the city. Generally, not the plan to tell private property owners that they can do that in a private property, but when they are deviating via this teaching mechanism, I think additional scrutiny is necessary. And although we've tried to come before you in isolation, I'm asking you to seriously consider whether this suite of recent and future developments best to change the goal outlined in the master plan. I'm specifically asking you to look into the traffic impact, impact of this collective suite of future developments. Eighty-two vehicle trucks from the Palham, two hundred twenty-three Mill Creek flats, one hundred twenty-four from the Millennium Place. And that doesn't include what happened with common sale. More importantly and specific to how our zoning ordinance reads. With respect to site design elements, the zoning ordinance clearly states, the applicant shall demonstrate at least three of the following site design elements that could not be attained. Through a project design under conventional zoning. So I really want you to focus tonight on whether, in the case of the Palham, could a conventional zone development also achieve redevelopment of the grayfield site? Could it achieve extensive landscaping? Could it achieve significant use of sustainable building and site design features? If yes, conventional zoning could do that. So guys, consider the broader context here, make decisions supported by the evidence, and that when possible, can incorporate public input, and if you feel you can incorporate public input, please justify your reasoning. Pointing to direct source documents. I want to thank the applicants for their time and energy. I want to thank staff for the very careful reviews that were very well documented, and I would thank all of you for your careful and helpful consideration of all proposals that come before you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Julia Schad, S H A D D H, eight-four-six-four, Park Ridge Drive. I don't have anything very else I could say. I wish I was talking three minutes ago. My biggest concern is. The amplified sound of the train going by. I have a three-year-old daughter. We hear the train around our side of West Ridge. If this building goes up, I don't know what that will do to the echo that's on the train. So I haven't heard anybody talk about that. I just want to pronounce that way. Thank you.
And the next resident, would you like to approach?
Third time up here, I think it's been seven years.
You can, sorry, introduce.
I'm Nate, I think I've met most of you. Yeah, this, this has been a seven-year adventure. One fifty Jeffords. Yeah, one fifty Jeffords. Gosh, I don't even know where to start. Seven years this property's been studied, right? Everyone dissected, how do we create something? Cool for the city, and I, you know, I respect everyone's opinion and opposition, and you know. I heard, I haven't been here as long as some, but I've heard West Ridge was opposed, right? So the original town, village of Dexter. There was opposition to that subdivision going in, so most of the residents here that are, are anti-this development. There was that same opposition to that subdivision when you, when it was built and moved in. Living in Jeffords, same thing, opposition, we want this eyesore in downtown Dexter. I, I've loved living here for years. I. I, I've loved living here three years. I can tell you two-thirds of the residents in that building are retirees who don't drive and frequent downtown businesses constantly. Uh, I mean, I'm there two or three times a week at restaurants and shops, and I, I would say we're some of the biggest supporters of downtown businesses. I talked to most of the owners of businesses in the past few weeks, and I'm one of them was in opposition to this project. Uh, I find it funny that there is this, this, uh, somewhat aggressive opposition because everything else that we put in and attempted to put in, canoe, bike shop, beer garden, uh, there was an apartment complex before, brewery restaurant. We never had the support here, right? It's always the minority opposition. And I, I feel like some of the opposition was garnered steam by misinformation. So, which was really disappointing because it's been seven years trying to figure it out. And Kelly and her team are local, and the project's awesome. And I don't see how it would detract to downtown. It's beautiful. It ties in, it's hitting back in the trees. There was a train that just went by. So if, if the noise and the traffic, I, I, I don't see how that will detract from the downtown. And I, the traffic circle addresses things. I won't go through all the loopholes. I mean, you, you have all this information. So, um, I, I know the demand is there. To be honest, I actually decided to make the move out of Dexter to move closer to my business. And I had a condo that I hadn't even listed, and it was five offers in a weekend. Five, five people interested. The baby born population's growing. They want housing. They want to be downtown. They want to be near the businesses and walkable and amenity. So, I don't know. I think this is great for the, the town, and I, I hope you consider supporting this. It is great.
Thank you. With the next speaker, would you like to approach, please? Anybody in the audience that would like to, sing?
Yes, there you go.
Pretty short. My name's Todd Pierceall. I live at one zero seven four seven Island Lake Road. My family and I have been here since twenty fourteen. And as I mentioned, we live a few minutes west down Island Lake Road. And I've had to deal with the cluster of an intersection that the Dexter Chelsea in Main Street intersection is. I stress two words, already is. Now, the proposed roundabout is supposed to solve everybody's problems. Dis traffics would be great, free flowing, no accidents. Hey, perfect. But that's proposed. It's not there yet. groups are putting it up. We didn't want it to see it. Therefore, I am not in favor of any apartment or housing complex at that location. Simply due to the fact of the increased traffic. Plain and simple. Everybody's listed a lot of other reasons. I support that as well. But for me personally, the traffic is huge. I spent a short time living in Chicago, and I can compare some of the traffic struggles in Chicago, all places, to sitting there on Island Lake Road for twenty, thirty minutes, trying to get to the other side of town so I can get to twenty-three or ninety-four or whatever. Growth and change is inevitable. It's gonna happen. That parcel will probably be developed at some point in time with something. I'm just asking you to strike down the apartment. And then, let's move forward with something that's more viable, um, for the public and the people of Dexter.
Thank you. Thank you. With the next speaker, would you like to approach?
Hi, my name is Beth Chamberlain, and I've been here for sixty-seven years.
Sorry, give your address, please.
Oh, seventeen oh one Baker Road. And you talk about a mess. Okay, first of all, you got a mess coming into town. I don't know how many of y'all get the pleasure of coming in at seven-thirty in the morning to try and get through that viaduct. Because nobody wants to go too, because, oh, they're scared. They're gonna, they're gonna bury you, John. They don't want to go there. So you sit there and you wait and you go, come on, Al, let's move the rat traffic. And now you're gonna do this here? I do remember folks from last year, what we were gonna say, I will never let you folks out. I, I still haven't. But it's the truth. We, we really, you know, what we need down there is a grocery store or something other than more housing, which the housing is okay, but to put one in there, Ray would roll over in his grave to think this is what we're doing. We had a perfect little, young guy spent all that money, cleaned it all up, we didn't do all that. Oh, no, that wasn't such a good idea after all. Nah, we'll put up a housing. We're never gonna know, just say, you're not gonna know, just don't worry about it. Just like that, the big old building next to the Berry Creek, you don't notice that either, right? No, you guys are, think about it. Think about what you're doing. I don't know where all you folks came from. The only one I know that's up there that I know for a fact, well, there's two of y'all, that came from Dexter. The rest of you, I have no clue where you all came from. But you didn't come from our little hometown of Dexter, because you wouldn't be doing this to us. Every time we turn around, you're lying, you're pushing crap through, you're telling us one thing, and you're lying to us. You're talking to these developers behind our back. Shame on all you folks. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
With the next speaker, would you like to approach?
My name is Lalo. I'm glad you're my first. I'm honored to meet you. My name is Jamie Miller, and I live at four thirteen Baker Crossing. I'm a lifelong Ann Arbor resident. I moved to Dexter three years ago to escape Ann Arbor. When people come to visit me, they say, we love Dexter. It's what Ann Arbor used to be. And I propose that you take a very different approach of this. I'm very sympathetic to the pros and cons. I don't, I don't want pros and cons. I don't want more divisiveness in any community, but rather, I think that you should, what is the vision of Dexter? What do you want Dexter to be? And then implement that vision.
Any other residents? And being none in person, we should, we'll go online. Can you see if there's anybody online that would like to raise their hand?
I do not have any hands online.
Is there anybody online that has any comments they'd like to make? If so, please raise your hand.
Okay, saying none, opposed to a public hearing at eight ten. Okay, so at this time, um, commission, we are in discussion. Yes. Oh, well, do the commissioners need a break right now? Do you want to continue through this one? Then we're good. Okay, I think we're good for now. Remind me all check backs, and then we have a long event, so please try to forget. Okay, so with that, we have a lot of presentation from our consultants. We have a, their reports, a couple of which Michelle and Megan are requesting a postponement at this time. But of course, we do have some, we want to give some direction to the petitioner as well. And, and we may, again, that's a recommendation. If staff or, sorry, if my question feels uncomfortable, we could go ahead and make a recommendation either way. So, at that time, if there is a motion to be made, we can continue some discussion. Mr. Carter? All right.
I'm moving to both of us. Yeah. Page twenty-one, if you're gonna read it. Based on information provided by the applicant's staff, CWA, OHN, and DFF, DAFT, following a public hearing conducted by the planning commission on August third, twenty twenty-three meeting, the planning commission postpones DPP SP twenty-three dash oh five, the Palom preliminary site plan, and special land use reviews, to allow the applicant time to address the comments and concerns identified in the following reviews. Staff review dated August third, twenty twenty-three. CWA review dated August third, twenty twenty-three. For gem review dated August third, twenty twenty-three. And DAFT review dated August second, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, the move targets, I support, do you?
Support with a correction to the date of the public here.
Oh, and that August second. Okay, thank you.
Incorrect staff report is August fourth. My bad, I'm now.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you were supporting it though, right? Okay, so we have commission discussion here. So we have a motion to postpone. Then we have a lot of decisions to make or feedback we can give to the applicant. So with that, if there's somebody that would like to start discussion? Please do. Would any feedback to the petitioner?
All right. Like last time you saw this proposal, I had this comment, and I'll say it again. Is there any reason? It's, I'm, I'm not against housing in that site. I do feel like traffic terms are absolutely valid. However, this project is getting caught up on a roundabout, but there's nothing, this is not going to move. And I, I, whoever it was who said, oh, we didn't see it, the roundabout working, I agree with them. And then, so I'm not sure what to do with the traffic, but, um, I do think the project still does not fully respect the value of the view from the creek side, the park side. And that that is, you know, it's not just the residents of Dexter, but it's tons of people who kayak down there, who ride bicycles on border, border trip. And while the pictures are very nice, they've got all the junk trees that are basically blocking the view of, you know, underground parking and visiting fully underground. And I, I, and I bought five, we all bought five buildings like that, and it's absolutely forbidden and prohibited. And there's no, like, maybe in thirty years or twenty years, that, that landscaping will grow up enough to disguise that. But in the meantime, the park, people in the park will be looking at the back of the buildings. And there's no disguising that for at this point, I don't think. And that, that's a real hangup for me as far as this park. And the other concerns, I just, I don't know. These are hard. But that, the, not moving that park is really the problem.
Sure, yes.
Eric, you, how do you feel about the view of the library?
I can't see perfectly. Because it's oil landscape, they've got that bank all in this state. But it's, you're not looking at, really, I think, it's hard to tell from the renders, but along with that, right? That's what you're seeing on that semi-underground park. And, you know, when we're kind of going to a transparency on a first look, that is the first look, really. And I, I mean, I don't say you're blasting the parking garage. That's not the issue. To me, it has more to do with changing the orientation. And it's, you know, they're saying there's no, no way of putting sidewalk between the buildings and, you know, the creek. But then there's all this, you know, empty space that will not be pleasant in the north, you know, northwest corner. We, that film's done playing, and that, there makes it too much traffic and a train. You know, creating what I call park space on that side of the creek should be in front of it, and the building shouldn't move on. And I, I, you know, but I said this last time, so, but I'll say it again.
Look, so you think the building is next to the train track, or?
No, not next to the train track, but there's room there. Push your back a bit. There is. I, there's.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's it.
So, that's fair. So, yes.
But, um, but consultants, how, how high is that train track, railroad track above the, about your floor line?
In their, in their conceptual plan, it was identified based on the practice.
Yeah, I get, I get what you mean. So it's almost, you know, restoring the half, uh, to the track, to the track, to the first look.
The train track, the, the elevation of the train track is almost eight six five.
Yeah, some of the site setting.
Looks like seventy fifty, right?
Four eight, forty-six.
So it looks that the current one is at sixty-four, sixty-eight feet.
Yeah.
It's gonna be two stories.
Yeah, well, two stories. The promenade streets, how high are those?
Around the trees, we're guessing sixty to seventy feet. We did our red area storage. Yeah, so the red area that we did from Main Street, we took it into scale of car that was in that program. We sort of scaled it to the point of that. So that perspective is straight active. But we didn't, I'm sorry, we did not serve the top.
Right, of course. But that's the, yeah, it's, it's, that's kind of core. Okay, I, I think the applicants are one of the things that one of the planning commissions comments last time was, a lot of times what happens in meetings is when, when, um, people are asked to use their imagination to guess what something's gonna look like when you do. And oftentimes, there, uh, there's a, there's a divergence sometime in what the project really looks like and, and what it. And so I think they're asking for showing those images of what it's actually looked like standing. And I hope some of the audience has had a chance.
Yes.
I also want to commend the applicant for modifying their original plan as much as they did to accommodate concerns that were ways to produce me. I think you've done a very good job. I do have some major concerns still. A number of minor concerns, which I think will be addressed because they've all been mentioned in this, in the reviews. But I don't understand one thing, that why are you providing more parking than is required when all the additional paved surface, of course, increases runoff into Mill Creek, or whatever. But nevertheless, it has dealt with Mill Creek. It seems to, it seems unnecessary to do that for that reason. Secondly, in that regard, we're talking parking. There ought to be a few place to put rats outdoors for people who are visiting. There's no question about that. I do not like the dumpster location. There's no reason that I can tell that it cannot be moved further into the site, even if it removes a few of the parking spaces, because it easily would be done and therefore not be right in front of everybody from, uh, from the street. And the biggest one I've, that, a concern of mine is the impact on Mill Creek. Well, no, I got an home to it, but the, the corners of the building are so close to Mill Creek. How you're going, how you are going to be able to handle that without the impact that you could foresee on Mill Creek? I would very much like to see. I know it's early in the process, but holy moly. Um, it's right on, the buildings are right on the edge of Mill Creek. Now, I'd like the way you've placed them so that they are pulled away in the center. I'd like that. I think that works wonderfully. If I were you, you've got this plaza in between the buildings now in the area where it's pulled away from Mill Creek. Why not, instead of making a new plaza, just leave the old vegetation in that location so that it responds more closely to the images, which are false. Uh, here, I mean, that vegetation is not gonna be there when you get done building a building. But I think a significant portion of it can be if you handle it correctly. As I, as I say, there are, I've got a number of other options, but they've all been addressed by the consultants. So, and I, and, and you've got them in front of you, so there's no sense in repeating all of those. I don't know. So, that's, that's enough.
Thank you. And, and again, I want to keep throughout my information as well that, although there is a motion to postpone, we still can, the determinations and everything that Michelle has highlighted in her report to try and, if we can touch on those at various times, because that at least will give the applicant some direction in all its ways. And we're not gonna take specific motion on that or a vote on that, but certainly not. Well, we could, we could walk through each one individually as we get through, but I want to say. I want to say that's a good idea. If there's any other, like, kind of overall, because we can walk through the determinations as well, just to make sure that we give some clear direction. Are there any other kind of general comments from the, yes?
So I like the new arrangement with this, this V-shaped region. Pulled it off, it pulls the center section away from the creek, which is helpful. I think Jeff's right, these corners are really close to that piece, and there's no way you're going to be able to landscape those. So you're going to see all, all the height of that building at those corners right next to the park. And, you know, we go down there a lot, and every time I go down now, I I try to look at these, look at and imagine what this is going to do to that site. As a general side, I don't have a problem with their building housing there. I don't have a problem with the type of project. I like the idea of, I mean, first, everybody likes the brewery kayak day, but, you know, if it's going to be housing, they're not bad. Although I do think they're still too tall. I mean, there's been a a little bit, it makes my kind of senses go up because, as Jeff said, this rendering shows the back of this building with two stories covered vegetation, which is going to be gone. Right, so put two more stories on, let's go look at this building and see. Inside for some normal things that are going to pour out around there, which are not going to cover up the windows of the first floor units, because we're never going to want to do that. Okay, so the rendering is a bit of a lie. And that kind of makes me uncomfortable. The other thing is too, this is a DC zone, and they're going for PUD, which allows them some special, some, you know, somebody said this, PD's not really playing check, but it's a it's a public, this is open negotiation, or it's working together of everyone. I just still think they have the idea that DC is a three-story zone, not a four-story, not a five-story zone. And so when we worked on the plan, on the zoning update, you know, it's intentional. The idea that we have a three-story town for the most part. Now, you get into the denser downtown, and maybe you can go up another story too, but you got buildings next to you cutting down that whole height. Now we're going from nothing to this. This, but warts and all, I mean, I can see behind this, but I still think, I think it's got to be. You got top deck, come on. So thoughts, comments? The whole town is three stories. And then it's going to be kind of boring from front, but when you come around the back and the seaside, you're going to see that whole way. And it's, I think, ruined that park. And I feel like public benefit is this water, which is going to get pushed across the creek. It's pretty neat trade off, because it really does, it's a park.
That's good, yes, thanks. I think you deserve a lot of credit for listening and coming back, cutting a building, cutting the height, moving the dumpster, creating the buffer where you have created the buffer. They don't feel for that. You keep trying, and I love for it. They would be really happy if the brewery go out, it's not his fault, but probably couldn't have helped. I think you have a choice at this point. And, you know, the treatment matters, you could move the corner back a little, you could take a floor off, you could come back here with another project. And I have very strong suspicion that you're going to face the same exact comments. I think you have a choice about whether you want to tweak this a little bit and see if you get a successful vote here. Or tweak it a lot and come back and still face a lot of opposition. And that's your choice, I can't tell you what to do and what not to do. I really do appreciate how much you changed the project from the last iteration to this iteration. I think that the corners are really close. I was curious, I was definitely going to talk about it, I was curious to see if anybody else talked about it, but obviously it would be good. I think that dumpster's got to move. You know, you're just coming up the road, whatever you do, you're coming up the road, you're seeing that dumpster, and that's not what it all about here. I think Jeff is really good with the point that we're generally not inclined to even more parking than need. And if you can get some impervious coverage off that site, you're going to help yourself. I I think, because we have a lot of folks here who weren't always here, it is important to talk about some realities in the situation. The realities are, that site is zone village commercial, and something's going in there. There's no question something's going in there. And, you know, a big part of it, brewery failed with the traffic concerns, getting people in and out of there. Our project like this, because it's special end use, we have some input to shape the project. There are a lot of other uses where we have no input whatsoever. We got a lot of pushback in the last couple of years about the dollar store going in. We had no input on that. So there's a lot, you know, it's a lot of business and a lot of use. There's a lot of projects that could be built on this lot that we've had no impact on, which we did not like. And that part, that parcel's not going to be part, like, whoever brought that up, like, that's not going to happen. It's just not. Because you can't make land or develop that lot. I'm a lawyer, you can hide this project and try to strong our parking there, they're going to sue. That's the reality, it's the situation. Can't use our power here to fill a project just because we want to park, so. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Jim. There's no smallness and we'll kind of touch on the determinations. All right, I'll go on, then I have a couple of determinations, so I have some thoughts. We're sort of already hearing what others would say. I would say last time I was a pretty sharp critic of some of the design, without necessarily giving you specific direction, just saying what I don't like. I think you did a really good job fixing that, I think, for, to put the way that the, I mean, all my, the comments about there is a sidewalk along the creek bank. I mean, you did, the way to minimize the impact as much as possible, you did by, you know, kind of angling the buildings away, creating that open space in the center there. Concerns, it, some of the design aspects, the stepping back to the top floor, which is also a concern. It's a different color, which I think causes it to go a little bit more in the background. Again, I'm not an architect, so I'm just saying things that I think make sense, but they, it 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 seems to lessen the appeal of that, I'm sorry, the impact of that part of it. Again, the the design, it is, I mean, it's an extremely challenging site, I get that. And and we can push you on in so many directions, I know that. So I think, getting to the bottom of everything that we're saying, you did a pretty good job of that before, because I think planning commissioners, we all have different ideas at times. Now, having said that, of course, there's, there's, there's more. But in other comments, again, in general, I think the bicycle parking, most of those seem to be kind of minor, and I think are are are, can be easily taken care of for the next time. I mean, I want to thank, I'm glad that so much of the public has come out tonight, because most of our meetings, we don't have that impact. And I know that there's a lot of misinformation spread around, so I'm glad that people are here to hear the actual facts. And I hope you all look at the packet to see and see the changes of what is in force now versus what was there before. I think it's really important to have accurate information. And I can speak literally, I I was on the board when Westridge was planned. I was literally sitting in the same seat, I've been on the board for twenty-three years. So I've seen a lot of development in and out of of the city of Dexter, in the village and city. And I can say it's true, we we hear, we heard opposition every single project we've had. I think Westridge, I heard the opposition, I think it's great that it was planned and developed, and our city is better for it, for those residents. Now, again, that's not saying we give a blank slate to development, but I think we have this push and pull. Other people mentioned parks, the park system we have in trails. I mean, again, I was in the ground floor of that from the very beginning of pulling out the dam. When the dam was underneath the bridge, I was on that committee as well as installing the trails, and on the BQB committee as well. I don't think anybody in this room maybe has had more interaction with the trail system and boundary of that than I am. And so I'm extremely sensitive to the trail issue. I've spent many hours in that park while they're staring at that. My kids were climbing on a little rock, and I'm way older than that. So that's a touch point for me, and I think, while in general, again, I I am, I I'm supportive, I think, density in that project as far as traffic, residential will have far less traffic than any commercial use that would go in there. But brewery, canoe livery would have infinitely more traffic nonstop than what the residential development will have. And again, the the traffic is bad, but we can't necessarily, this project is a metaphorical drop in the bucket, and I know eventually the bucket tips over. But i- if this, the problem is not it was doing milk in the city for the traffic end of it. But my concerns more or less go, again, is what kind of dimension, is the proximity to the bank? I mean, you have the 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 streaming, you have a tight site, I get it, you have a limited certain portion to make it cost effective. Effective. And I know that one of the reasons we postponed it here tonight is for soil stabilization stabilization study, more in depth. I think that is is crucial, I mean, Mill Creek is a trout stream. Another thing is that I, again, I mean, I fish trout, I we, we have to protect the quality of that stream. I am very, very interested to know how that bend is going to be stabilized. I also think that it was flagged in all the consulting reports about the vegetation on that. I think you have a tremendous, and some of it was just invasive, I don't think the landscape architect was from Michigan, I don't know if they looked at it. Some of it was just invasive, we need to have all native plants, I think, native to that area. And I think maybe go a step above and beyond, because I share the concern about the elevations that were shown here tonight. Is, yeah, that vegetation is going to be gone. And I know enough about the vegetation, a lot of that is junk and invasive. We probably want it gone, because those seeds are falling in the creek and spreading down the river. So we want some of that gone. But and the cottonwood, the large tree that's out there, that's more than half dead, that's going to fall down eventually anyway. So, but having said that, there's, like I said, I have that concern, because we need to show an accurate elevation, what it's going to look like while it's being built. But I think there's also ways that you guys can come and mitigate that, larger than required landscaping, more required landscaping along that. Maybe a design, because, right, we're not seeing that bottom exposed area, maybe a brick pack, something that, again, makes that fade into the background a little bit. But the the angle of the buildings, again, like I said, that could, I think that significantly helps that impact from across the creek. It's going to be there and it's going to be big. So, as I said, I think this is a PUD, so we are comfortable, I think, in going above and beyond what, well, I should, not we, I am a little comfortable going above and beyond what the village commercial says here. However, you're, we're going above and beyond, meaning above and beyond consideration of that streaming and treatment from that park. I mean, you've heard it here and there tonight, how many, how important that park is in the view from the park. That park's going to be an advantage obviously to your residents, as well as the future residents that are all around the city. The parking, we touched on that briefly, I'm I'm struggling with that, because again, with the impervious surface, so close, right, it minimizes that with the runoff into the creek. Then I get, I appreciate that the vast, vast majority of the parking is underneath the buildings. So that that's huge, I mean, again, there's not that much surface parking, and you don't have a lot of surface parking, well, you don't have any surface for street parking right there. It's it's a bit, so I I understand for visitors and things like that, so, but there's that concern there. So I think that covers most of my comments, and then we can touch, currently, it's brewery, everything, all right, they don't do all this. Yes?
Yeah, and one of the things I want to point out of is the, I don't agree with one of the other planning commissioners about, you know, this being on the back of some buildings, somebody to look at. But based on how the buildings are angled, you are creating a a sight feature there between the buildings that's going to, is directly adjacent across from the park to look at. And I I guess I would urge the applicant, in terms of your next round of images, one is to show that, show what it's going to look like, you know? And and, you know, really kind of demonstrate the design and what you're thinking of for that vision. And also, I I agree with some of the other planning commissioners about, you know, accurately portraying the landscaping there along that that corner of the building where where those trees, I I agree with what said that that those trees really can't be there. So show it, show it the way it is, and 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 kind of kind of demonstrate your your vision there of what the community. The other thing I would say, just a note on traffic, I I agree with with Matt, and the reason why we don't require a traffic study is because there are so few cars here, and the reason, Matt pointed out.
Wait, wait, wait.
Matt pointed out correctly that the the the, this is a low traffic user, the the cut, or load on the system, because people move in and out.
At worst, you'll have to unlock your device.
People move in and out of residential over the course of the day. It isn't like a a commercial building where you have a set start time and a finish time, and you have the parking lot emptying out at five thirty, and people coming to work at eight. When you're not residential, the the traffic is distributed throughout the day. So that makes it a lower, it was called intensity user. It isn't just about the numbers of cars, it's about when people move and when the trips occur. So that's why, one of the reasons why we don't require a traffic study for a use small, it's considered insignificant on the overall system. Other people can say that every one car is a problem. If you're going to look at it that way, then sure, then then any any project in in the city is a problem. But as also as we pointed out, it's not these applicants, they don't own the road system, it's not their problem to solve. So we zone it, people designed to the zoning, and we work in there.
Which side of the tunnel do you live on? The west side or east? All right, no comments to this, all right. Okay, so, yeah, you have additional?
So just a couple of things, I think perspective is important on this project, and it's been brought up a couple of times from a number of different commissioners and from my neighbors here today, speaking about the project. Thank you for coming out, for sharing your perspective, because I think, again, it's important. It would be nice to see a section, the the renderings that we have, I'll never look at your site from any of those perspectives. So it would be interesting to me to understand what the perspective is going to look like, or what it is, just related to the GIS elevations as you go from the main corners downtown, across your site through the tracks into Westridge. I think that'll be help, tell a little bit of a story there. I I get hung up on four stories versus three stories, when really what we're talking about is forty-five feet, forty-eight feet, eight inches kind of thing. But the corners are really close, thank you for making the changes that you did, I I thought that they really improved your plan. Move that solid waste enclosure if you can. I think it could move to the other spot where the trucks come in and pick up bicycle groups. A number of planning commissioners are set, would be nice to have in a couple of different locations accessible for visitors. I'm not challenged by the parking, if my family lived there, I probably need four spots when my kids came to visit from Dallas, so. Kind of a shared parking situation where people have said this about the trees versus shrubs. I'd like to try to get the landscape planning correct, and then excel and I see, like, it's saying that this is a benefit of the site. I'd like to see shrubs versus a machinery wall. So mention the dumpster. Yeah, I think it's a unique site. There's a lot of different circumstances here, you've got a rail, creek, a bridge, an intersection, a flood plain, lots of things to solve. So thanks, thank you for making the changes that you had, and look forward to seeing the plan as it gets revised. There are things that have been brought up in all the reviews that may have impact on the layout.
Okay, so, thank you. Yes, yes.
One additional thing that occurred to me that I'd forgotten to mention, I think it, it's in the report here. But I think it would be very important to show what the phase one plan is going to look like. What, when the phase two building isn't there, and therefore probably very little of that parking is there? That's very important relative to what your building, your phase one building, looks like from the street. So it'd be nice to see what you're planning for the phase one building when the phase two building isn't yet extracted.
Okay, so maybe a quick run through the determinations right now, see if we have any additional feedback. We commented on some of those, and again, if there's not, nothing necessarily, nobody's objecting to that, I'll just kind of keep reading through them. First, I want to give the applicant the. Um, first, I want to give the applicant, do you have, do you want to respond to anything necessarily at this point? A specific point or are you, are you good for now at least? As much as you can.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, alright, perfect, thank you. Um, okay, so under our determinations on page fifteen or packet. So these are again, things that are basically a PUD recommendation, all around. Um, the density is one of the first ones. Um. Yeah, I mean, I guess we didn't. Sorry?
Oh, I'm okay. They're not asking for a dense development, so there's nothing to do.
Oh, I'm just going with the good version, alright. Doing better. Okay, so PUD determinations, page eighteen, thank you. Fifty percent of front building out when seventy-five to ninety percent is required. Um, again, there's not specific comments on that. We kind of just kind of assume everybody's generally okay with that on this site. Um. Uh, the ground floor height of eight feet when a minimum of twelve feet is required. Again, these are the uh, uh, the, the, what village, VCs, wait. What's his own VC, right?
Zilbys.
Yes, that's right. So, um.
Matt, if you could.
Yes, please.
So certain condition of these, you make feel that making a determination now is premature until you get certain additional information. So and ground floor heights specifically is one of them. Um, because we don't have the geotechnical. If some of these you may say, okay, yeah, these are comfortable like the first one. But you may want to wait until the geotechnical reports. If that's the case, then what I would suggest is you I, you identify that, that this determination you want to wait. But be specific as to why you want to wait.
Well, I thought we weren't necessarily making a decision on any determination because we're postponing.
You can postpone, but you still need to determine as a piece of truth.
Okay. Okay, so that's, so again, so I I know, and I think that could be helpful to give them some direction.
Right.
But but that's true. If we don't feel necessarily, i- if we have strong feedback on that, um, if we need additional information, we wait, yes.
Um, I I have a comment about that geotechnical stuff. That's a, that's really a building uh from an issue. That's a construction engineering issue. I don't know why we're talking about soil conditions. Site stabilization and soil stabilization, design of that is not a zoning issue. I mean, we, we define the criteria. We want that bank stabilized and we would like to know from the applicant kind of the direction they're going. But I don't know that anybody on this board is going to look at the soil conditions and the water table depth and say, well, you need to do, you know, you need to have an extra three feet of concrete. And that, that, to me, I I guess, maybe I'm missing something and maybe the consultant can help us. When, when we get the soil going or in the geo tech, we find out where the sand layer is and where the silt layer and and where the water table is. What, what is that going to tell us as a planning commissioner? Are we going to help them design up the banks of the project or what are we doing there?
No, you, the planning commission, will likely not help them design that. But your engineer will provide you the information as to whether what they're proposing is feasible or have the degree of engineering that was needed in terms of how to impact the site. So in terms of, our concern was that the, our concern is that the corners are at the, are right at the top of that soul as all of you, as many of you have identified. And that either in our opinion, ideally would be pulled back from there recognizing that it's a difficult site and there are engineering things that could be done to facilitate a building like that. The only mechanism that we knew of in consultation with staff and the engineer, they wanted to get that with the geotechnical. Um, now, I understand that is a construction issue and that usually comes up then. But at this point in time, what you're doing is giving waivers for buildings on height and placement where there may be a concern about what's possible. And also that will, what, if there are soil issues that could influence their design. And if this was passed as it is, whatever is on that land is setbacks in what the building on the road is. So that was the reason that we asked for that.
So are you envisioning that they'll have a structural engineer here and we'll have a, a, and a bill, somebody, a building official here? Where they talk about the design of the corner of the building? I'm missing a note, so I think it is, I mean, we build bridges across streams, rivers every day. So I'm not sure if we're arguing that it may be impossible to build these clothes to the, to the edge and we need to have an engineering debate, then that's one thing. But I still don't see how we get from zoning to soils.
Well, one of your, one of your criteria in every planning report uh is you're supposed to show what the soils are. And show the soils in your, um, you look to see what the buildability is. If you've got a whole layer, if your entire site is wetland or peat, even if it's not completely regular and wetland, you know there's going to be a, there are, when you be concerned is to how much that substrate can hold.
That's a, that's a function of that foundation type of bondage.
Okay.
So if, if, I don't think the applicant's going to have to spend too much on the building.
No, no.
It, I'm trying to understand how foundation design.
Geotechnical report that was provided was for the previous development. And it showed that um they hit groundwater at six feet. They're proposing a curving garage. We don't know how far that curving garage is rolling down. Is it going to hit the water table or not? That is something that we should know about. Um, because if they, if they, is it feasible then building to build? If it's hitting the water table, or does it have to go a little bit higher so it stays out of that? So it may be a combination at height. We want to be able to give them the right determination.
So we're worried about whether they can build their building or not? Is that a function of uh cost of engineering? I don't think, again, I don't think, see how feasibility, construction feasibility is tied to soil.
Okay, so then what you should do is talk about that and give directions to the applicant. I'm really, I'm so, we did this because it was a PUD and it was a prohibited use. We probably wouldn't be asking for this at this stage.
I mean, I think that's fair. I understand your concern, but I think it's fair. We've got to move on from this one issue. We've been questioning it, but I understand your concern. Tom, over, did you have a question?
No, I have a statement to give you, but you know the name of it.
Sure.
I think that the soil has the opportunity to influence stormwater management, which was something that Marcus had mentioned. Um, it may influence and that they have changes to make to revise the plans. It looked like the building, to me, it looked like the basements were above the flood plain and might be right at that groundwater thing. So it may have influenced the building height when they go here to revise things and move things around to get the water main in the right spot. So I see it influencing potentially stormwater and the basement elevation from, from my perspective. But I agree with Tom as far as it's a building function um for the foundation. I don't want to know about it structurally. I just want to make sure it's been accounted for in the stormwater management and the uh elevation of the website.
He said that better than I did.
Yeah, okay, perfect. All right, well, having said that, I'm definitely concerned about the soil site. Um, determinations, again, give yourself, number three, we did have some concern about height. Um, obviously from a couple of commissioners. So um, that was something again, as well to look into the partial sidewalks. That, I mean, I think, um, yeah, give it, give the site layout. I hear overwhelming concerns with with the partial sidewalk along that frontage there. Um, so, parking spaces. So again, we got kind of a mixed reaction on that. Is there any additional thoughts on that? Or you could have kind of heard um back and forth about too much parking and kind of okay with it. So go ahead with that comment. That's our determination in that one. I mean, you, you have an additional thought on parking?
Yeah, I would just say that maybe I would, we could talk after, after next video a little bit more about the rationale for the number of parking spaces they have and, and and what they're thinking and why that is sort of planning commission can understand.
That's, okay, great. Um, oh, the six street trees with seven to ten are required. I think that's a function of distance and linear feet, so I think that's okay. Yes, yourself?
Overall, the comments that I heard from the planning commission, the way I interpreted them is excelling landscaping and thinking of those terms, excelling some landscaping requirements.
Yes.
Of for the entire site, but primarily what you're seeing from across.
That screening.
From across the creek in the park against that building, so.
That's where I.
That's where it is, that's where they need to excel.
Yeah, the vegetation, yeah, I think would be key because I think it would also add value to your site instantaneously and the people that might live there. Larger than required trees, that's a win-win. Again, a little bit more, but that, that could be seen as a public benefit additional, larger than required trees along that creek, creek. Um, oh, yeah, and then the, the other kind of determinations are the shrubs and and you guys are going to work on that. The head sea shrub, juniper shrubs. On the dumpster enclosure, um, again, you have very kind of mixed reactions on that one. I don't know. I mean, I kind of thought it fitted okay there when I was looking at the site, but.
Turning radius with the.
Well, that was one of the things, the truck turning radius, how's, how'd that kind of work out? So you've got to run through those numbers. Um, that may be the best strategic location for that based on that. Um, oh, you've got possibly every vision. So anyway, I I would look at the dumpster enclosure because that seems to be a point of concern. Um, and the entrances as well, the primary entrances. And the last one, which is the building facade, again, I don't think we would ever get that on a site, on this site given how you need to access the site and every other constraint. So, right, here, any other concern about that frontage required? I don't know how you'd ever read that there. Again, the village commercial, which I I feel like, yeah, I just read this. It's not like we want to necessarily grant waivers, but this is a very unique site, so we'd never get that on a site. Um, I don't hear other concern. Okay, so those are the determinations basically. Um, and I think with that, uh, a feedback of various natures, so in different directions. So any other final thoughts on this project? And then we'll have a roll call vote. Again, right now, the motion on the table is to postpone. Uh, we did say to the, wait, I'm sorry, did we say to the meeting, the next meeting date in the?
So we are, we just give it the precise date.
It's, you didn't give a precise date.
Do, I don't think we need.
So.
Do we need to? Because then that puts them on a time. I don't know what your. Probably should be. Or do we have to put a date? We put postpone until applicants, right? I don't want to rush it back if it's not going to be.
No, if you've postponed, we'll let the applicant time to address.
Okay, I think that's adequate unless anybody feels wrong. Okay, perfect. Um, alright, so.
You want to ask the applicant to be clear on the business?
Are you guys clear on it?
Yeah.
Clear or not? Okay.
Clear as we can.
Yeah, okay, well, alright, that's what we're waiting for. Uh, okay, so at this time, can we have a roll call vote, please? And the motion again is to postpone.
Phillips.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yeah.
Hubert.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes.
Hubert.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes. Okay, so that'll be postponed till you get your results set and then talk with Michelle over that. Thank you. Okay, moving right on, we have another topic here scheduled for tonight. Um, that's the Mill Creek class, planning unit development, preliminary site plan. Um, that is for a seventy-six unit multi-family apartment project. That's seventy-nine ninety-seven, seventy-nine sixty-five Grand Street. Do the commission, uh, is the commission one a break right now?
Stand.
That, that, okay, let's, let's, let's just give a, a four-minute break to nine o'clock.
Four minutes, it's the restaurant.
Okay, nine o'clock, four-minute break. Not Michelle, sorry. Camera tonight, uh, again, the Mill Creek class, planning unit development. I read the description, seventy-six unit, seventy-nine ninety-seven, seventy-nine sixty-five Grand Street.
Kirk Wall, Steve, I'm going to.
Oh, yes, sir. Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, Tom, it's going to go through to yourself. All right, so what is that? The applicant, uh, would the applicant like to give a, uh, kind of the brief background, some summary of the project or changes and whatnot?
Sure, absolutely. So, uh, good evening, I'm Mike Penn. Uh, it's been a fun fill of night already. Uh, I sit on the DDA, I live at three three eight nine Broad Street here in town. Uh, I'm a local Realtor. Um, and so part of the goal of this project is we wanted to kind of, somebody who's intimately involved in the community from a, a number of different levels, wearing different hats. We wanted to make sure that, it's a, a deep importance to me to make sure that we grow, we grow smart and grow well as we kind of navigate all of these different projects and it's so well articulated or that there's passionate sides there. Uh, this particular project, I think, a couple of things, I'll be brief tonight because I, I know that I've, we've been here several times and so I'll, I'll kind of try to keep my piece of it brief. Um, it is a seventy-six unit, uh, multi-family apartment complex. Specifically, it is apartments, this is not condos. Uh, we are trying to meet the master, master plan of the city. We need this, uh, the different divisions, the goals the city's kind of set forth. We're trying to also provide a different housing stock than what is typically, you know, is often proposed, right? So in our particular case, as we're all probably pretty well aware, Walkabout Creek is our major uh apartment complex in town. Um, and we want to provide something that's different and specifically targets a missing little section. Uh, thus, this project has come about. So I personally own myself and my partners own uh seven, the, the two parcels on Grand Street there. The two non-scripted, stripped houses, if you kind of like were to drive down Grand Street. It's kind of sandwiched between Grandview Commons and the cemetery. Uh, it's very long and deep like site. It's not very, there's not a ton of frontage. So we tried to do a, a really good job of paying attention to what's, what's going in there. The amenities are order of order trail, I think part of Grandview Commons, PUD, they have a pathway there. So kind of the operating term that, that I use as we were meeting with the, as a team was we want to be, have an active community. We want to make sure that we're driving people outside, driving people to the trails to enjoy all of that downtown has to offer. Obviously utilize like, you know, this is like erratic ales and the new Broderman's Bistro and so on and so forth, right? So we wanted to kind of continue to, continue to attract people downtown, but then also offer uh a different housing option, right? So with that being said, um, I don't think I, did I miss anything there? We just said it there. Right, so cemetery, I think the first time that we came, one of the, one of the things that we heard loud and clear was that we wanted to make sure that we treat the cemetery, who is our neighbor, and then get that right. So we've had, uh, we've had several conversations with them over the course of, I don't know, four or five meetings. Uh, we've met with Jim Smith, hopefully he's online, I don't know if they're, Jim is online. So hopefully, you know, if you have questions for him, you're welcome to do that. We've had very positive, productive conversations on what their needs are and what our needs might be. So again, we want to be uh good neighbors to them. Um, my former next door neighbor is buried there. I have, I have other friends and family that are buried there, right? So like, it's important to me to make sure that we get that right and make sure that we treat that border between our property and their property and treat it well. Um, and with that, I'll kind of turn it over to Rob. We try to just respond to staff comments. Again, we'll try to be brief tonight and we'll welcome any feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rob Burrows at Polk Studio, the architect of the project. Thanks for having us in, in, once again this evening. Um, we did get a very lengthy discussion last time, so I'm very much like Mike. Just want to give a, a, a few very specific talking points. From an architectural perspective, very little has changed since your last review, with one key exception. There are several comments made about the, what we call very generically the curb appeal in terms of how the front of the building that fronts brand itself has, um, there's, there's a request for additional focus and direction architecturally on the front door and the terrace and some kind of porch feature. Our entire intent from the beginning was to have that building interface distinctly with brand itself. Transparency through the windows as well as an outdoor living space with the individual residents on that floor. The upper floors also have that. But the key focus of the revision was the addition basically of a, a front porch. Uh, we've created an armature structure that wraps up the side and comes over. Um, we've created a, a division in front that separates transparently through, through a, through a small, um, transparent fence structure um that separates the curb condition, the walk in the, the public side from the private side. Just to give a little bit of definition and separation. Intent is still to have people sitting there waving from the front porch, saying hi to the neighbors, leaving from that door to go off their dogs, where the case may be. That really helps define our original intent, which is to create urban edge condition and define that urban edge to the, the pedestrian, leaving the interaction with one another. So beyond that, from an architectural perspective, the, the package is partially the same as previously discussed. So I'll be around for more questions, of course, and I'm going to turn it over to Kathy.
Great, thank you.
I can kind of make an engineering, and we did make some changes to some site plans to address what comments and concerns we heard from the concept plan. We modified the parking lot slightly, we met with the fire department. Um, went through in detail exactly what they needed to be able to maneuver on the site. We adjusted the location of the dumpster to create a turnaround for them. And we also moved from an island and gave them a wider parking island and area to take the maneuver on the site. And our landscape architect put a lot more detail into the plan to. to address the comments and concerns we heard about that water between the cemetery and the property. And I think that we addressed all the other comments. We have received your concept plan and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. All right, our consultants. I didn't just kind of highlight you.
Good evening. There are three other changes that went to highlight that the applicant made between concept and the preliminary that's before you right now. The number of on-street parking spaces was reduced from six spaces to four. That was because an on-street loading area on Grand Street was added as to facilitate deliveries on-street, on Grand Street to the facility. And also, the maximum lot coverage has increased slightly from 22% to 27%. One thing I want to highlight in terms of the context of this site is that it's got a cemetery on one side, Mill Creek Park and the cemetery on another, Grandview Commons adjacent, and then multiple family across the street. So really, there's attached single family or multiple family adjacent to this or parking cemetery. Again, this site is the future land use and its zoning is village commercial. We've gone over really what the intent of that future land use is and also the goals of the, the goals of the, of the master plan in terms of what relates from being the same. Except for here, we felt that the mobility goal to facilitate safe and reliable movement by pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, and transit riders through a system of complete streets interconnected with a non-motorized network was part of it. Especially because of how the applicant is composing the landscaping and building orientation to that required pathway in Grandview Commons PUD that goes down and then connects into the trail system that's in the Mill Creek Park. The topography on the site, it does look gradually down from Grand Street with a steeper slope at the rear approaching Mill Creek. One of the issues that was brought up the last time by one of the planning commissioners was the number of trees on the site and whether some of them could be preserved or not. And then just noted that 19 trees, mostly on the property lines, the cemetery and Grandview Commons are supposed to be preserved. In terms of wetland, there is a wetland on the site and the applicant is proposing a 15-foot wetland buffer. There's no flood lanes and there's a mention of what the soils are. In terms of building location, it's proposed to have a unique design where the, there's an underpass for cars to come and access the parking lot, much like Millennium Place, which is another PUD that was approved by the planning commission and the city council previously. So we cited in terms of design, the innovative design, including the rain garden, indoor and outdoor common spaces and the 15-foot wetland buffer. And then also its relationship to adjacent uses. In our previous conceptual review, we talked a lot about dignified response to the cemetery and feel like the applicant has responded really well to that in terms of the landscaping that's proposed. In terms of looking at waivers, there's a number of them. In terms of the minimum front yard setback, it was required to 15 feet. They're proposing for it to go down to five. The porch setback is required to be five feet. It's proposed to go down to one. That's because of the wide 99-foot right-of-way of Grand Street. And then if you look at Grandview Commons adjacent, this winds up. And so, and this is not an unusual circumstance with the large right-of-ways that you have in previous proposals along Grand Street. In fact, if you abide by that, it may look, it might look vastly out of context. They're also asking for a maximum building height waiver. So the required is 45 feet and three stories. They're proposing three stories with a penthouse. There's no exceptions for a penthouse in terms of height. So then by the zoning ordinance, that's a fourth story. But their building height for building one is 49 feet and their building height for building number two is 46 feet. And that's taken at the building phase where the entrance is, and that's for the definition of the ordinance. In terms of traffic impact, based on 76 residential units proposed, the development equates to 222.68 feet of trips a day. I will say I do agree with Mr. Phillips and Mr. Kowalski's description of residential traffic as opposed to a commercial use. Generally, it's less and generally the peaks are at different hours and it's not as, the peaks aren't as intense. In terms of vehicular parking, they are required to have 92 spaces. They're proposing 89, so a waiver of three spaces. The planning commission used to decide that warrant, that three-space parking is warranted. There are 30 efficiency units proposed, so usually that is a one-person dwelling. And on-street parking in this case is within a 10-minute walk. In terms of landscaping, they either comply or exceeds requirements except for the replacement of landmark trees. In that case, what they would be required to replace those trees on a one-to-one inch is 73, three-inch caliber trees. They're proposing 58. We've asked for a waiver based on the existing wetlands on site, reduce that ability to mitigate the adjacent lands in the north and west is not residential and can't be developed as residential in the future, i.e. the parking cemetery. The property and the areas are screened from the public by placement of the building along the frontage. Mitigation trees have been provided along the property lines adjacent to the cemetery to Grandview Commons to provide screening. Mitigation trees have been provided along the wetland boundary to extend hospital and the majority of the existing tree species to remove are now allowed to be planted by this city code. We also apply that 25% of the heavy metal switchgrass that's perennial is proposed to be 17% of landscaping. You can't have more than 10%. But because that's a perennial grass, they're planted, you need a lot of them to quick to one bush and rest. We would recommend that you grant that waiver. As noted, the dumpster's been moved back and I know that there was some comment before that and wouldn't be visible from the park. There's landscaping proposed around. In terms of exterior elevations and floor plans, there are two deviations that are asked, one for cornices and one for breathless out windows and lintels and sills. Those are intended in the Form 6 Code to continue the historic architecture that's found in the areas of the old village. But if you look around here, there's not, there's not really an established architectural pattern. So if you felt like this would be warranted, we feel like you could soon in the bounds of the intent of the zoning ordinance. In terms of PUD qualifications, again, as stated in the previous case, they need to demonstrate three. We've highlighted three that we feel that they need, industrial and transient-oriented design with buildings oriented to the sidewalk and parking to the side or rear. Preservation enhancements for restoration of natural features. And significant use of sustainable building in site designs, such as water reduction, landscaping, innovative water, wastewater technologies, et cetera. In terms of project density, they are not asking for a density bonus. I'm over the formula again. But essentially using that formula, we found that 87,964.2 square feet could be built on the site. They're asking for 61,200. And also, we noted that they were very low, it's 26% of is the building coverage and that's very low for a site this size. In terms of PV opens, open space regulations and natural features, we felt that the project meets those sections because open spaces are conveniently located in relation to dwelling units. They have, they have trails, they have a gathering areas, they have a boardwalk. Proposed the natural features such as the wetland is protected and that's not required by home ordinance for a five-acre or much larger piece, you could have, require those wetlands, that 15-foot wetland buffer, but not for a site this small. So they're volunteering that. Significant area in the rear of the site is dedicated to open space. And the layout, the amenities and those proposed connections provide areas for active and formal recreation. And the natural features overlooking and connecting to Mill Creek are proposed to be preserved and have been incorporated into the design of the site. At the end of our review on page 184 or packet, we've listed seven waivers that would be listed, that would be needed, that I've highlighted over the course of this presentation. If you choose to make a recommendation to the city council, you should make determinations as to whether the preliminary PV meets the provisions of this section and recommendation to the city council on a probate basis. And just so everyone who's here, I know planning commissioners, you know, but I feel like I should have shared this on the last, the last presentation, the process is the planning commission makes a recommendation to city council, city council then approves and then says a preliminary plan and then, and then there's a final stage that then happens again with planning commission recommendation and then the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, Marcus, can I give a quick
Yes, I'd be very, be very brief. And Megan set me up perfectly. We had six comments in our review, none of which are expected to impact site layout or any of the other considerations for preliminary review. But we made the applicant aware of them, so if they do move forward through the process, they'll, they'll know those prior to preparing their final package. But if you have questions on any of the comments, I'm happy to answer them. But again, they're really housekeeping on them, so.
All right, thank you. We can do a fire, a quick fire summary?
I can, I can.
Okay, sure.
I can do the fire summary and I report unless Chief or Ed want to say something about it.
Oh, no, you're, you go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. Megan's gone over all of the planning, the master plan, the zoning with you, so I will now refer to take that for you. The key items here. There is an encumbrance on the, on 7997 Grand Street. It's a recorded memorandum of right of first refusal. It's what the cemetery did when they sold that property for the first time to a, to somebody who ultimately developed or redeveloped the building that was there. That was the maintenance building. The legal description that's in that memorandum is subject to a 12-foot-wide right-of-way for ingress egress. It's not shown on the plan. In conversations with the applicant and subsequently with the cemetery, it was thought that that must be on the side closest to the cemetery. But when I was able to look at the legal description based on the survey, it's actually, it makes sense in hindsight. It's, it's most likely where the existing right-of-way is on the east side. So there, as you can see in the letter that Mr. Smith provided, it's in your supplement. They're, they're working together on creating some way for them to have access to the, to that western property line in order to be able to maintain the cemetery, but they can't get to it except through this property. So that's a negotiation that they have to work out. But in order to develop the property as it's proposed, that easement, that ingress egress restriction would have to be extinguished and whatever new thing they come up with. That doesn't prevent you from moving forward today if you so choose. But the updated revised plan would have to show that so that it's at least a part of the rider. The applicant's aware of it. Mr. Smith may talk about it if he does public. You have some of the same minor items, building height, parking, landscaping, exterior elevations, like the previous proposal. Landscaping is expected to be not just meet the standards, but exceed them. And it's not uncommon. Every site's got something that's unique. The previous one, as Karen had mentioned, it's being able to screen the back of those buildings on the creek from across. That's, that's, that's the focal point for that extensive landscaping, where it comes to itself. In this one, it's along that boundary with the, with the cemetery. Their engineer had explained to me the reason why they're still entertaining while there. It's needed to stabilize the differentiation in the grades that are there. You've got a swell between the parking area and the and the wall, the wall was there between where the fence would go and there's, she can probably explain it better than I, but it's basically a great change and that wall stabilizes. Other than that, they really have addressed, with the exception of the preservation of a tree, they've addressed most of the things, or all of the things that you had asked. So there are determinations for you to look at today. As well as a motion with some specific recommendation or conditions for approval. I can answer any questions you've got? Or you can, right, go forward with your, well, look here.
We'll do a lot of questions in a little bit. So at this time, I would like to open it up for the, under the public. We'd like to comment on this proposal. Please step forward, say your name and address.
Brian Williams, 413 Baker Crossing. We just, my wife and I just heard about this, this thing coming up this past week, so had a surprise, so we missed the earlier opportunities to weigh in. But I think we're just, we would like that City Planning Commission, when it comes to the waivers that are being requested in order to make this thing fly economically, apparently, that you please consider that the added traffic that from other 222 trips a day and the implications on traffic around the stools and child safety because this traffic tends to happen at concentrated periods, it's hard. Another thing that seems to be going on is there's a kind of perpetual water emergency in the community and and I haven't heard how that's going to be remedied any time soon and the added, the added demand on the water system and the sewer system by density and development. It seems to, doesn't seem to balance in my mind with what's going on at the Water Department anyway. And the last thing I'd say is like the density of this proposed housing adjacent to other things, seems like it certainly has to impact the property values of the adjacent properties.
Thank you. Does anybody else have like to address the commission? Please step forward, say your name and address.
Sure. Well, I live there.
You can say your name and address, please.
Pardon?
Your name and address, please.
Richard Weaver, 407 Baker Crossing. And I've been there for four years, beautiful place, wanted to be built, has a beautiful piece of land over there that they're looking at. But at the same time, I understand that you might want to do something more little. When I looked at some of the pictures, the first question I had is it appears to be kind of high, maybe a little big, but that's me and I'm thinking the big thing is density's an issue, that's an issue, but I would assume that everybody, and I'm very impressed with what's going on here and how you're analyzing everything, that we, and you do a very good job of measuring for everybody who's in that. I'm in favor of seeing it, but I don't, I'm not sure I want to see it the way it looks like in the picture, so it's processed. So that's my, what I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else like to address the commission? Please step forward, say your name and address.
I'm Jamie Griffin. I live in a forest, we rest in circle. Again, I just want to emphasize a comment I made in the previous public hearing. There are obviously a lot of details to consider, a lot of trade-offs to consider. One thing I keep coming back to though, from straight out of our zoning ordinance, which says the applicant shall demonstrate to the The applicant shall demonstrate to the planning commission and city council that the P U D provides at least three of the following site design elements. That could not be attained through a project under conventional zoning. In the case of the current development, what is being proposed is pedestrian oriented design, preservation enhancement and restoration of natural resources. And significant use of sustainable building and site design features. It is not clear to me that those three site design elements could not be achieved under conventional zoning. If that's the case, then my agreement for zoning ordinance is that it does not meet that requirement. And so if you interpret that otherwise or have additional information to clarify that point, I would appreciate.
Anybody else like to address the commission? Step forward, say your name and address.
My name is Bill Mario. I live at thirty seven twenty nine Ryan Drive. This is due to me, but I had a couple of questions that I'm sure you've already. Thought of and taken into consideration. Number one, the proximity to the cemetery, is there any way to? Give the cemetery a little bit more space, snow removal, what happens to the snow? Does it get dumped down in the cemetery? Things like that. And the other thought that just came to my mind was. There's a lot of units here. If any of the units are occupied with families, where do the kids play? What, I mean, there's not, doesn't look like there's a lot of open space unless I'm reading this wrong. But those are just my concerns. I'm sure you've already thought about those, so thank you for your time.
My name is Rob Luzeck, W C Z A J, seven one sixty-five Gold Street. My my main concerns are the proximity to the cemetery. Like the legend and dignified and leaving the people's loved ones who are buried there. They're buried right against the fence. And when that fence gets removed, the drawing I see here. My personal opinion would be there could be a lot more done to be a lot further between both people's loved ones. And this apartment, I think the height should be a concern for people who come there to remember their dead. They they bought, they bought. In a cemetery to honor and respect their dead. And I I think everything should be done to make sure that's maintained. And that people can still come there and have a place of remembrance. And and feel dignified. The the trees, you're talking about historical trees, I think everything in the world should be done. To maintain trees and go above and beyond landscape for those people. Who, one, most importantly, are people who who are buried right along there, but everybody else for the rest of the cemetery. And then I'd like to voice another concern is the cemetery is already. People use it as as a walkway and as Bill mentioned, if there's seventy-six families laying there. There's people who go to the cemetery and can let their dog run loose and throw a ball and their dog is going through the cemetery. Which is not, it is not respectful. And if we're not going to put another seventy-six families there. Who don't have a place, there is an open space that I'm concerned the cemetery is going to be used as. You know, it's not a gym here. It's not a playground. My daughter is eighteen years old and is a new member of the cemetery. I lost her in April. We want this cemetery. To be replaced, that's respected for for the death. And not just for me, many of these people are, their bodies are right there. And and they should be the ultimate, most important thing for this part.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please step forward, say your name and address.
I agree, I mean, standing behind my husband, but I want you as my.
Sorry, can we give you your name?
My name is Sandy Luzeck, as my husband, Rob Luzeck. I want you as my neighbor to look at my face and see me, to see that there are real families there. The families, I I I promise you the parent families, I recognize names of families that are buried along along there. And I guarantee you that they don't know because they would be here. We believe that all that life is sacred, that we are made in the image of God, that my daughter's body is going to be reunited with God. That is a sacred place. I don't see on those designs respect for that. I don't see a large buffer. I I see some, you know, I. I want you to look at my face and see my pain and 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 look at me and tell me what you're going to tell those families when they find out. Where their families are resting, that I understand that that's going to be developed. You know, I I don't, residential is probably a good use for it. But and the the real comment at this point from me. Is the buffer and not just a token buffer. I mean, if you want to put a park in that in your development, then you put it there. And you make it large and you make it beautiful and you put lots and lots of trees and you shrink that property down. That is not respectful of the dead. So it's not an argument. I understand, just like Mr. Cardy said, something is going in there. I don't want a dollar store in there. But this is a, you read the history of that cemetery, you ask yourself what Judge Dexter's Judge, do you know Judge Dexter? Put that cemetery in, do you, you ask yourself what Judge Dexter's intention was? Ask yourself and look at my face and then prepare yourself to look at the faces of the other families who have. Their their bodies there. Life is sacred, death is sacred. And I am not speaking out against the development. I don't understand all that. I'm speaking about when I see, I'm not speaking about a about a development. That is too large, it's too big and frankly, it is disrespectful. It's disrespectful.
Sorry, if you could just address the comments to the commission, please.
It's disrespectful. So please, commissioners, as you look at this site. The history, you want, I know that you want history, that that is our history. What is going to happen when when the cemetery is up? Can always be intruded upon. What are they going to do, plow it down here? This happens in towns, this, that is sacred. It needs to, it needs to be maintained, it needs to be restored, it needs to be respected, it needs to be taken care of. That's what people, when people bury their dead, they want the dignity of remembrance. They want freedom from intrusion and cemeteries are always intruded upon, always, and yours, they are intruding upon the cemetery. I understand they want to put a buffer there. That is not enough. It is not beautiful. And it is not respectful.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to address the commission at this time? Please step forward.
Hi, Laura Talasco. I started in Westridge. Oh, it could just probably last me. E S. I live at five oh seven Warren Market Lane. So I did start in Westridge and I know people work on set development, but we brought foot traffic and business into town and then. I opened a business, I co-bought in Freeburn and then my husband and I bought a house in town, renovated it. And we just moved to brand new town like two months ago. Um, I think that's a beautiful piece of property and I know it's going to get developed. I would just like to see it a little bit smaller. And a little bit more peacefully done.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the commission in the audience? Seeing nobody in person, is there anybody online I would like to address the commission at this time? Please raise your hand. See anybody correct?
I do not have any hands.
Okay, alright, we'll close the public hearing at nine thirty-six. Okay, so planning commission, we are now in discussion. We have some sample motions or yes, recommended motions. On page one thirty of our packet. So there's a couple you can either. Again, approve, this is preliminary, again, so this will be the preliminary site plan. That that will go forward to council after this, if 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 it was to pass tonight, and again, so we can pass it, deny it, or recommend postponement. So with that, sample motions on page one thirty, anybody like to take a motion? So we've got page one thirty.
Let me make a motion that based on the information provided by the African stats, C W A O H M and V A S D. And following a public hearing conducted today during the August seventh. Meeting, the planning commission finds P P S P twenty-three dash oh five Mill Creek Flat. Preliminary site plan and special land use. Meets the standard set forth. Section nineteen point oh five E and eight point oh three of the zoning law ordinance and recommends. Approval to the city council subject to the following.
If you want to say I was one through twenty-two, as noted.
Okay, I will do that.
And then by making that motion, and that would galaxy with. Yeah, maybe the form of gentleman on those findings within number one.
Yes, nine through, what it is, or what is it? It's one through twenty-two defining subject to those findings, is that correct?
Subject to the following, well, those aren't necessarily the findings, the subject, well.
It's subject to the following and then.
Yeah.
Starting with number, and then like you said, one through twenty-two as. Listed in the status report, further, number one. Does one through one A through F provide or does not provide? Same with number two. We have to go a little bit further with the motion.
In that regard, the. I agree with. Everything, so provides the following recognitions. Following recognizable material benefits, A through F. Does not provide, I'm going to add there because I have an objection to number C, which has the. Screening and projection of the boundary adjacent to the cemetery.
Then that was removed.
Yeah, okay, not including, rather than does not provide.
Removing, I I see.
Yeah, not including that one. And then number two, the proposed P U D project. I'm.
Those are the ones where Stan and C W A identified that they, not those different ones.
Where, I still have a question on all of those. Parking.
Who can ask that as well?
Yeah. Satisfy the items. The requirements of section nineteen point oh one, if you will, the zoning ordinance. Does that cover?
Yes.
And then the only other one is number seven, you have to make the choice.
Oh, I see that.
That they have to. That fifty-eight trees is sufficient or there's a contribution to the tree fund.
My recommendation on that one would be the contribution to the city tree fund for the balance of the trees that cannot be planted on site. Doesn't say that specifically.
Doesn't.
But there is, it's something like fifty-three, something like that.
Thank you, Chad. So is there support? Does everybody understand basically remove from the sample motion on page one thirty? Remove item C. Under number one and then the project satisfies requirements of nineteen point oh one and then on number seven. It will be the contribution for the balance to the city street line. So do we have support for section? Okay, support others. Alright, so with that, comments, thoughts, feedback for the for the applicant. Or as well as and and a motion if everybody's clear and if we object to certain parts of that, please. Point, so there's a number within those, the motion we just made, there's there are some basically by default from findings that. That he was making with that motion. So.
I, yes, please. To my motion.
Okay, comments on your motion. Go forward, please.
First of all, I like what has been done with the parking lot hidden from the street. Having said that, and I like the project in general, having said that. The proximity to the cemetery, I think, is an important issue and question, and I made a suggestion. The last time we talked about this, which apparently I'm disappointed in a couple of things, and one of them is that comment that. The the view from the development to the cemetery is always going to be nice. But the view from the cemetery to a parking lot is not. And no amount of planting bare trees, as nice as they are, and as many as you put in there, it's gonna soften that. I distinctly recommend that you, that that be an everybody's separation. So that people who are in the cemetery are not looking. At a parking lot directly, that there, it would be year round. Doesn't need to be tall, it needs to be able to screen those cars. But I, but I feel strongly that that's something that could be done and should be done. Nothing new to the cemetery is the other way around. I also am disappointed that you weren't able to save that thirty-two inch open at twenty-six inch walnut. That looks to me like it could have been a little creative engineering, but. It is what it is, I understand. I have a question about the loading zone. Why is the loading zone necessary? And the the little.
Snow blazon or deliveries.
Why can't they drive in? You know.
Yeah, I was kind of curious on that. Why? Is it? Okay, yes, that was kind of.
That was a request from the fire department. To not allow vehicles to drive into the parking lot for deliveries in the case that they might be in there. With an emergency vehicle and I concern that a truck in there for a delivery, even if it was parked in a parking space, might block their access and their ability to search. So they specifically asked us to either provide a loading space somewhere on the site and to make sure that they can. Maneuver in the parking lot and our thought behind that was that if we put it out on the street. And have a loading space on the street, then there, because you know, our entrance is in the front for the mails, packages, and deliveries. And also the other developments on the site, if there's an apartment complex across the street. It doesn't have enough parking in the parking lot to accommodate all of their units, so. That's, those parking spaces on the street are actually public spaces, but the apartment complex use those as. For theirs and we just thought that if we had a loading space on the street. It's going to be used by a delivery truck for that whole area, not just specifically this.
Okay, but you know and I know, that actually could drive right.
We will put signs up, the same.
Alright, I understand.
Thank you, that's, thank you.
And Bill brought up a question that I had also. What are you going to do about snow? Or are you going to push your snow? Are you going to have to load it out of there? Then what can you like, is there any place to push snow on that site? Anyway.
That's a good question.
What's the thinking about?
Additional, yes.
So a couple of things, I, first of all, I'd like to thank the applicant for hearing us on the front of the building. It looks a lot better and I think the residential areas, little patio areas face the street. Are a real asset to your your project here. And I also want to say I I agree with Chad in terms of the the buffer being an evergreen. And I also want to say I I agree with Chad in terms of the buffer being an evergreen. You know, between the cemetery and the parking lot. The thing about. No matter, as he said, no matter how much density of trees, when the leaves fall off with them transparent to the cemetery and those folks are looking at. Those cars, so. I I agree with with that. Otherwise, I think it's an outstanding project.
One quick clarifying question about that. Is there a wall or not between the cemetery? So how tall is that?
Two foot long.
Right, okay, so. Sorry. Yeah, okay, yes.
Yeah, I. Like I said, I'm on, I like the integration of these porches in the front. Certainly makes it feel like the building is turning itself towards the street instead of turning it back. That's that's a nice update, and I definitely think this. This cemetery. No, they're right. We need to make sure that we don't desecrate this cemetery with. Putting a parking lot so close to with the sun stream. I mean, nobody wants to see a car parked there when you're at the gravesite. So I think that needs to be done very well, and I'm with Chad. It should be evergreen. And I would go further to say that is is there no fence there by those partners?
There's an existing fence. Come down, but a new one we put up, but it's hard on what they're working on with the center.
Oh, so there'll be a new fence.
There is a fence.
Is a wall?
Maybe okay for some.
Wall. I don't know. I felt for commission, it's a wall.
So the other thing he hasn't only particular type of fence, because it's something that they're trying to work out with with the cemetery. Like right now, they're saying they'll have to take a chain link fence.
Yeah.
So. They're trying to work with the cemetery, cemetery is working with them as to. What that what that should be.
But I mean, it's still gonna have to be a defense, so.
And just to clarify.
Yes.
A new fence is not proposed. What's on your plan is essentially is a new, they removed the old chain link fence. They would put in a two foot retaining wall, and then the landscaping that you see in the landscaping. So at this point, there's not a proposal for another wall or fence. There, the only thing is a two foot retaining wall that would not come on the screen headlights.
So can the wall be, I can raise the wall, the height of the wall a little bit? I mean, I know ultimately you don't want to raise it too high because that would look bad. Even a couple more feet or so that and then with evergreens on like behind it or something as they're mentioning. Is is that, because a fence isn't going to do anything.
Well, her her this is it's the cemetery's property. I mean, they're they're not. Okay, but just so we don't have two fences.
Oh, I agree, yes.
There's definitely need two fences, but this is a, this is an area where it's it's kind of difficult because. They've got to figure out with the cemetery. How much space is going to go there and what's going to be done? My suggestion would be to make broad conditions for this that allow them the flexibility to work that out. The comment you made about the year round evergreen screen. For. The wall. Consider increasing the height, but don't identify a maximum and you don't.
Right, right, okay.
Um, you you, the conversation at the conceptual talked about a fence on top of the wall, you guys.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
So you're not going to that that way.
Yeah, no. Okay, so I mean, general feedback as we're getting like, I think the applicants here, there's concerns about the screening between the parking lot and cemetery, so. Right, I mean, and recognizing that the the manage management of the cemetery ultimately has a say in this decision, so. And assuming that they will be respectful of their their cemetery property, assuming.
In the other general comment, in any whatever fence is going to go there, provide general account that that has to come back to you at final.
Right, so yeah, I can see the applicant nodding. Okay, yes, okay, thank you. Okay, so perhaps that's good on on that for now. Yes, Jim, so.
I love your project. Love everything about your project. Think you really listened to us, came back, tweaked a little, did everything you should do. If I were team of the planning commission, it can make you do whatever I wanted to make you do, I would make you put up a five foot brick wall separating cemetery or their parking lots. Can I say that specifically knowing that masonry is expensive, but I say it's for future districts? A cemetery is something that's going to be there forever. And a brick wall is the sort of thing that lasts us a long time as opposed to any of the number of transitory fences that we could put in there. I think it's also important to say like this is part of why it's it's important to walk around town and be here a while. You know, if you've walked that street. Until this project, there's been, I would say. Very low, but there's at least two very low value buildings that have been right up on the border of the cemetery. I think it's important to say that your project has a chance to improve Dexter. And one of the reasons, one of the ways is you can give a public benefit, which is part of the P U D. Is to really build a nice wall there, put some money into it and square it off. And you know, you heard Jamie tonight, one of our city council people, really calling it to question whether you're bringing enough. Benefit here to meet the P U D. And that's objective. There will be people on both sides of it, but you know, we've had projects here with a public benefit that's been really clear. I think the project before you guys that you were here for, bringing a whole water main across a river, we've been trying to get a water main cross. Really isn't going to support a P U D when they're doing that. Really isn't. There's not a lot of public benefit. There isn't. And it's one way that I've sort of. Classed with the staff and with our our consultant before, I think we're too easy to go to the P U D. I think there's enough here. There's enough here, but it sure is debatable. But I think one way you can make it not be debatable is sink some money in and put a wall up. It's really a wall. You see how emotional important it an issue it is and. You know, I'm like I said, I love your project. I'm inclined to vote for it. I would. Couldn't see myself not voting for it if you really went that extra mile. So that's my feedback.
Yes, your goals. All right, let's go. I'm sorry.
Um, why did one of the benefits that wasn't cited was some additional requirements to the town? I went on the line today to see what's available for rent. There are three properties for rent to be done. And this is going to change that, and I, you know, the housing report, I think, asked for like two or three diversity. So, you know, I was looking at. The factors that are meant to be taken into consideration as to why this brings public benefit. And I thought that should be one. And I like the project quite a bit. I do have the question of how tall is what's proposed compared to Jeffords?
Name of Jeffords is.
I mean, others are very. Jeffords is.
Jeffords, the one said the Jeffords project?
You know, there's.
That's like horse form.
Well, stories doesn't do it.
You're right.
So if I'm not mistaken, your project is the same height as Green.
Yeah, because that penthouse is set back, so the alternate height of the project has to cap in the penthouse, but it's set. So it is true, this is the true height of the project. However, I think street level, you're not going to see that penthouse. Set back. I mean, that's that's one of the issues. But yeah, if you look at the total height of it, yeah, that. What we've got. I don't personally can have a comment.
Yeah, I guess I I agree with a lot of what Jim's saying. I don't know if five foot is the right height or whether bricks are the right material, but. I I think, you know, when we get into these discussions about. Improvements along property lines, I think there's always a little bit of us that makes me kind of wince a little bit because. I can see the negotiations where a cemetery that hasn't, that has a chain link fence now. Is is sitting there and you just sit there and wait for the public. Kind of discourse and and they, you know, cemetery is an amazing use, but it's also a business. And 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 I think they own part of this issue too. I I I love to hear that somehow this this owner and them are able to split the cost of it or something. Because this is something that, you know, they're not alone, and this applicant is not alone in this issue of. The cemetery has done their own layout. They they created what they have. And they chose to to treat their property line the way they have and to put up a chain link fence there along there as opposed to a brick wall or a. Or a more dignified fence, so. I guess I don't have a real like zoning comment other than say that I hope that. When the applicant is negotiating with them, the cemetery takes this seriously as their responsibility as well.
Additional. Comments, uncommissioners?
You had asked what the height of the one.
Oh, well, check for.
Forty nine and a half. And they're in order for the. And this one, they're asking forty six and fifty.
And what is the height to the front facade though? What are to the? What's the height to like street, the street wall, I guess. What's the street wall height on this project? Do you know?
Less than both of those.
Right, the street wall, not including the penthouse. Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, so I have a couple of things to, I, yes, I compliment the. Oh, kind of first, then almost.
I just wanted to highlight, there was a good comment made about. First playground.
Oh, I was gonna.
All right, so. You're right, I mean, the kids live in here and.
I've got one question to think about. Yeah, no, that that is a good question. So yeah, think of that like outside play menu or something for residents that are gonna live there or at least have a reaction back to that. So again, I was gonna say that I do compliment the architects and the team for listening. I obviously was one of the ones that had the issues with the front of facade of it, and. You know, I think I really, I like the design for the project, and it's it's very, it's different, and it doesn't fit any. It's like it's different than what's along that, but it's okay because then what else is along that street? Because I think it's so. It fits nicely. So and I my biggest concern, as I've said over and over, was the front porch. I think you've done a great job of that. I have no problem with the setback exactly one foot because that's what matches the 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 street facade going along there. And yeah, so I really like the addition to design. I think it's a. Yeah, it's just a creatively designed project. I think going to public benefits, I think. And and I do, I'm one of the ones I think I do look in depth at public benefits that. Again, the density is below what they what they could have, and I think somewhat this design is a public benefit. This is nothing. In in some ways in that we could have blocks, we could have just like three block buildings like this right in front of each other with parking up near the street. I mean, the parking is as hidden as it could be. It's, I mean, that although it's not public, but the amenity space for the residents in the back, not a playground, but it's it's truly neat and cool. We don't have anything we can close to that. So I mean, I think those are all good things. And of course, I share the concern about the buffer, as I already said. The the tree thing, oh, well, there was another tree that I I have a concern about, which is the maple up near the the front corner. You guys are showing it safe. It's near the, so it would be the northeast corner. It's a really large silver maple. I I would like you to look at that, although I I know the lines keep cutting that. Oh, that's one thing is the plant is great, the planting plan, you got great native species in there, great. Next to the wetland, because you look at that, whatever seeds are in that, on your plantings here are going into that wetland. So that's very important. And I know this architect does a good job, but I but I do have a concern that I don't know how you're going to try and save that large maple. It's very close to the foundation. I believe you're sticking more utilities underneath there, so I. I don't know how that's going to survive. So I I mean, I would like if you could point to have landscape architect look at that, I think. It it, yeah, I I just, I think it's a benefit if it can be because it's a big, it's pretty healthy. I saw it today, but. I don't know. Are you gonna bore underneath there or something? But I don't know how you could possibly save that tree. My concern is, again, construction is gonna kill, it's gonna die within a couple of years after this. But overall, like I said, I mean, I think I I I support the 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 project, but you know, again, you've got our concerns regarding the. The buffer line. I don't think I can ease this again, that's that will be, as Michelle had mentioned, all of us, they have some. Incumbrances upon the property, but again, I think if you guys are gonna figure that out, if you don't, you'll be back or you'll be gone, I guess. You're gonna figure out. It's everybody's best interest between yourselves and the cemetery owners to to figure that out, so. No, I I think that was, I think that's it. So yeah, again, just thanks for react the front, the design of the front. And again, the height, I think, is, I like the addition of the penthouse. It's a it's a really cool feature in in the way that it stepped back, the street wall. You're not gonna see that from the street wall. It's gonna be, it's the same as when you're walking by Grandview Commons right there, you know, those townhomes there. It's gonna feel like that. Now, it's obviously a little bit higher and straight up, but. That with penthouses step back, you won't even see those. Okay. So that's it. Oh, other thoughts? Yes, Michelle.
Of the different comments and suggestions that you made, which ones do you want to put into your motion?
What?
Because you've had, you've added some things like a year round evergreen screen or they talked about that. More than one person. Mr. Hardy has suggested a five foot. Brick wall, how would it fit in the cemetery?
Masonry spot. And more, how about we consider, should we should we take this and bring it back?
Well, I don't know why, I mean. Preliminary decisions. Well, that's, this is preliminary, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, we, I I, well, yeah, planning commission law, but this is preliminary, so they couldn't, they would come back at the final with with these changes that if we don't see it, I mean. That that's my thought, but again, we obviously commission.
I forgot.
No, no problem. Thank you. That's a good point. Yeah, and I think again, to Michelle's point about not being too specific with that that treatment along that property line, but I think Chad, your confidence, it's your motion. You wanted to add something regarding the evergreen screening within there. That seems to be every good point. And additional, I don't know how to word additional. Uh, screening may or may not to the wall, yes.
I I would say they're still negotiating the center, so why don't you let them do that? What rather than us put it in in the motion and then come back? They they heard what we said. Otherwise, was that kind of making it impossible for them to negotiate a center?
Or is that. Oh, the trees, I don't think the trees.
Right, maybe I'm right.
So bring the wall or something, yeah, okay. So Chad, again, if that's that's up to you, if you want to amend it to include.
The screen, I've already struck item C here. Which is a screening, but adding or substituting, adding an evergreen screen.
Right, that can just, that can be an additional. Yeah, don't worry about it being taken out as a recognized material benefit, but. Don't worry about that.
Not worried about it.
So, so you want to add a continuous evergreen screen along the cemetery on here?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, for your actions, supported that. Their continuous hours, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, anything other additional concerns? Michelle, is there anything else we, sorry, there's just always so many contingencies and. I mean, there there is a lot here, but again, I feel confident preliminary.
I'm just gonna say if they're gonna change it like that, I'm gonna be a no, because I think it needs more than an evergreen screen.
Wait, you think what?
It needs more than an evergreen screen. So that's officially part of it, I'm gonna be a no.
Oh, that's because you want additional screening.
I think it needs a fence.
A fence, okay.
Brick wall.
To be clear, the cemetery is going to want one defense up there. They have to, whether this project was coming with that, they were planning to replace that.
Yeah, what I'm saying is we have a significant wall there. I don't know why we need an evergreen screen.
Well, I just, they were, wait a second. They were planning on putting the wall on the boundary because of the fact that you got gray stones so close. Excuse me, but they have to figure out if if there's going to be. How they're going to treat that with a fence.
Given the questions that this is preliminary, how about we just mute that out? They've heard our feedback.
The evergreen.
No, not think about a fence, not think about a screen, let's see. No, not think about a fence, not think about a screen, let's see what they come back with.
Good. I mean, I guess that is a good point, so if they come back with the exact same plan, exactly, then we can express our opinions again. So, yeah. Okay, so what is that, now is that a friendly re amendment, I guess? Are you gonna unamend your motion? Okay, yeah, thank you, I'll stick to that. Okay. All right, is that, is that Chuck? Okay. We have a roll call vote, please.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Haley, yes. Hill.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yeah.
Phillips.
No.
Roberts. Kowalski.
Yes.
Who said no?
Okay, so, just wanted to, all right, thank you. That's a good feedback. Thank you, see you soon. Okay. Moving on, we're time, we're time, can somebody grab time for it?
Weekend business. And I'll be ready to go.
Does anybody want a break?
I need to have a quick break.
All right. All right, we're giving two minute breaks, ten away, we've got ten minutes, we're running two minutes to stop. So, and we'll find out how long it lasts. All right, we're back in action. Ben, and your next public hearing? I lost my agenda, I need to read this over.
Okay. All right. Would you like some help?
Ready my agenda?
Your next case is a public, a public hearing to consider PT AZ O two four zero zero one, that's text amendments to the zoning ordinance to allow commercial outdoor recreation as a special use in the central business district and to allow recreation equipment rental in the central business district, village commercial district, and on the road corridor district, we make a road corridor or base districts. So, staff presented this to you at your last meeting, explained the rationale. So what you have today is you're doing a public hearing. We'd be amending Article two definitions, section two definitions, so that you add a definition for recreational equipment rental and to delete the word bicycle, bicycle, or rental of bicycles from the existing definition of recreation, commercial outdoor. The words that are added are underlined, the words to be deleted are struck through, it's very clear in here. The second amendment would be to Article six, I'm sorry, Article eleven, I can see it. Section eleven point ten B, the form based district table, to add recreation equipment rental as a permitted use in the CBD, VC, ARC, and EC zoning districts. Again, language added is underlined, language to be deleted is struck out. So you can see this has got language underlined. Commercial outdoor recreation is a special use in the CBD and it's a permitted use. Recreation equipment rental is permitted in the others. We'd be amending section fourteen thirty recreation, commercial outdoor recreation establishments excluding golf related uses. And you'd be limiting the gross floor area of those commercial outdoor recreation establishments in the central business district. Again, that's as new as underlying, has to be deleted as withdrawn or as struck out. So, you're just adding a new subsection D that specifies that commercial outdoor recreation establishments in a central business district cannot exceed ten thousand square feet of gross floor area. The text analysis and review, I went over that with you at your last meeting and happy to go over it if you feel the need. I've established the goals from the master plan that this amendment does satisfy and then the suggested motions for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any more detail, I'm happy to provide it, but I think you just.
We may do that, so, you are the applicant, so at this time we're open the public hearing. Anybody would like to step forward and state your name and address? Seeing one member of the public and he's not stepping forward, anybody online?
If you not have any hands online.
Okay, so then we will close the public hearing at ten fifteen. Okay, so with that, we have some sample motions in our packet and does anybody want to make a motion? It is. Oh, thank you. Thank you for out of order, yes, page one ninety two. Oh, yeah, that last motion took a lot out of you, Chuck. All right, anybody wanna make a motion on this one? Could wait a little longer. Bill, Leonard.
Anything that I can help anybody understand? It's A B or C.
All right.
Pursuant to section forty three point oh six of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance together with the information presented by staff and input received during the public hearing conducted by the planning commission on August seventh, twenty twenty three, the planning commission recommends the city council approves PT AZ O twenty three dash three text amendments to the zoning article two definitions, section two point two definitions, Article eleven, section eleven point ten the form based district use table and section fourteen point three old recreation, commercial outdoor recreation establishment to excluding golf related uses as presented and based on the following finding. Number one documentation has been provided from city staff that supports the proposed text amendments and according to section twenty three point six point A as cited herein. And two documentation has been provided from city staff that supports the proposed text amendments and according to section twenty three dot O six dot V as seen here.
Okay, move to. All right. Discussions, we can ask Michelle questions. We have seen this a couple, in a couple iterations before, but we can definitely add questions, changes?
What is crazy about the golf?
So, the ordinance currently.
Question, I guess.
It doesn't allow golf use because you're talking golf courses, then you're talking putt putt and those are considered more intense uses. And the ordinance doesn't know, doesn't, that's allowing different metal sections.
So that's not so much like the rental of golf clubs, it's just actually performing the act of golf.
Correct, correct.
Just the actual golf.
Golf, the act of golf. Yes, it's a game on the court, right? Okay, other than that, any other thoughts, comments on that? I don't wanna rush discussion. We will call vote, please.
Phillips.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Covert.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yeah.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our fourth and final public hearing tonight, fences. Public hearing to consider an amendment to Article three, general division, section three point zero nine, fences to revise the standards for front yard fencing, reorganize the listing of standards for fences in other yards and provide provide revised graphic to clearly illustrate the kind of statements. Okay.
Yeah, so you have the the edits and you have it, so it's just an amendment to Article three, section three point oh nine, to fences. And it's just a little bit of reorganization to make it more clear and also taking the amendment that we had discussed at the previous meeting regarding the front yard fence. It's on the secondary front arch to get rid of the four foot standard altogether because that was just really inconvenient for people. And then on page one ninety four has the updated graphic, it's pretty similar to the one that's in there now. But it's it's adjusted a little bit to make it more clear exactly where that difference is between where you can have that six foot fence and where the front yard, that's standard supply.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, well, now we will, may I have questions for you, Ben? I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Could anybody like to comment on this issue, please step forward, state your name and address? Okay, seeing no one in person, is there anyone online that would like to comment on this public hearing?
I did not comment here, someone.
Okay. Seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing at ten twenty. Okay, we are now in planning commission discussion. And we also have a motion, of course, on page one ninety five. A couple of suggested motions. Somebody will have to check today.
I will.
So we're not. Wow. Whoa. Let's people eat out.
Pursuant to section twenty three point zero six of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance together with the information presented by staff and the input received during the public hearing conducted by the planning commission on August seventh, twenty twenty three. Planning commission recommends the city council approves PT AZ O twenty three dash four text amendments to the zoning ordinance Article three, general division, section three point zero nine, as presented, based on the following findings. That documentation has been provided by city staff that supports the proposed text amendment and according to section four three point zero six A as cited.
Support. All right. Okay, support over, we'll do this, work over, any questions, discussions?
I have a.
All right, yes, sir.
Perhaps a question, perhaps. It has to do, not the height, but the privacy, the rear yard fence standards, which can be privacy expenses. Is there language somewhere in the zoning ordinance about privacy expenses in regards to how they're constructed? In other words, the framing for the fence ought to be on the residential side rather than on the public side?
The finished side?
The finished side ought to be on the public side, the outside.
Yeah, we got that too, there's a, there's a regulation. The unfinished side is on the interior of the lot. I mean, the unfinished side is on the interior.
Yes, yes.
Great, any other questions, Thomas?
I'm green, it's probably, I don't wanna rock the boat too much, but just a little, I mean, how about trying to encourage for the back, for this privacy fence in that, six feet, pretty short. Close to your neighbors. You've got an urban setting here, you've got small lots. There's that, it's made for neighbors and all that. I wish there was some provision for, it can be, okay, up to six feet and then you have, I think of a fence cap with lattice, someone has room, some, by, as a gesture, if you will, the neighbors. I would like that at some point, or something like that to be provided for.
You could do that now, but you, if you wanted to, put like five foot fence and then put like a lattice on top of that, but I see you. Yeah? No, good, good point. That's true.
I would like to see those backyard fence side boosted. If not above the six, then as a, an additional amount granted for the trellis.
We're still done, okay, any other? Okay, can I get that done this time?
No, no. But I didn't, I'll put it in.
All right, but in that for the next provisions, yes?
Yeah, I I think like Romulus and something older subdivision, I have that all figured out. Everybody has a fence and then it's just a grid off yard and then they'll cross each other.
That's how urban, that's how urban pattern.
Yeah, they, you know, Romulus and like.
Or or Charles. Try to smear the whole idea.
I would say that.
I mean, whatever.
That's a bad, circle it back.
Yeah, all right, you guys, that's good. Okay, yeah, okay, now any other comments on that, otherwise we'll call vote, please?
Hill.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yeah. Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Haley, yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, item approved. Item five, free reason citizen participation, we have done. Reports of officers, chairman report, we do have our special meeting September twentieth and I think we have almost not all able to attend, thank you all for that. The other thing I was gonna mention, oh, we actually have it on the agenda here, but next, um, next, the September fifth meeting is the election of officers, so start thinking now, you know, change up things a little bit, you never know.
Unless, because you have a forum, when do you get out?
In case you. Twenty one, what's going on? No, I don't, does anybody want to amend the agenda to do it now, or we'll do it next? Okay, unless everybody wants to do it now. No, okay. All right, so my head and commissioners, anybody else have anything to report?
I have one, I have one comment after tonight.
Yeah.
It is, I don't know if this is more properly directed with staff or review, but at least twice tonight, people podium attacked applicants.
Yeah.
Like attacked. And I think we need to stop that. I think we have a responsibility to not let that happen or to react when it does. And you did react the second time back, but maybe, maybe we should make an announcement beforehand that at the podium, you were to address the planning commission. We're not supposed to address anyone in the audience.
Yeah.
I definitely, I definitely felt bad for me tonight, like there were people like attacking.
Yeah, that's good, so that is a good reminder, thank you, and I, like you said, I did miss some of the other conversations and looking, but, um, yeah, that's always a good reminder that the first person, then they're looking directly at the applicant. That comments need to be directed here, so I think that's more on me than staff, but, yeah, no, absolutely, and that's the kind of feedback that's very helpful, I mean, we haven't. Uh, yeah, we haven't had anything quite like that in a little while, but it's always good refreshers.
Only once, maybe.
A while, or once, that's pretty good. That's true, and my normal job, I get a lot more, yeah. Um, so, uh, okay, good feedback, any other commissioner, uh, concerns, comments, issues, what, anything council that you can remember?
Yeah, I just want to say something briefly, the last couple of council meetings, I think there have been. Multiple members of council at this table expressing concerns in the public meeting about the level of misinformation that's going on with community right now on various projects, including the ones that we heard about tonight. So as people who sit in these seats and are more informed than other people, anything you can do to help sort that out and get the facts out there and help people understand. Who, you know, how the process works, I mean, initially, people have posted on Facebook that this was gonna be a council meeting tonight. And there's a lot of hate and a lot of anger directed at council, were being called not nice things online for things like the roundabout. That's not in our control, so if anybody has an opportunity to help with that, I would very much appreciate it.
Tried to do a little bit.
Well, and I'm frustrated that I couldn't say this when everybody was still here, because I was about to, I mean, I will, everyone, my cell phone number is nine zero six three six zero six five nine five. Call me and I'll tell you why it's a UP number and not a seven three four number, I've been in West Van Washenaw County all my life except for college. And just after college, so, yeah, that's what I just, I think one-on-one conversations are easier to get the facts across than statements online. And situations like this where we can't respond back to people.
Yes, and I agree, that's why I said I was encouraged with the people here, so they weren't getting all the misinformation online, hearing the facts, but, yeah, absolutely, it's very frustrating, somebody sent me something, yeah, just was not, not even close to what the reality was. Um, but thank, yes, to the, most we can do that, as much as we can do for that to spread the correct information, the better. Um, Michelle, do you want?
Just to echo that, yeah, and then even like the whole process of our master plan works, you know, it's like, we've been working on this for years.
I don't want to change it. I just have a heart of all the sun times, a flow chart. And then, um, I think really, really much to say about this, and when people should be, you know, educating and exercising is at the master point. And they should have strong feelings about, we need more on our park there, or we want this, or that, and then show, and then zoning, I don't blame the people. But nevertheless, that's sort of still, this is their shot, and by the time we get to this stage, it should be performed. And it isn't, and it's the opposite, and when people are still exercised, because we're not responding to them, it's like, you know. The guy is cast on some of this stuff, and I, you know, I really, I think it's kind of picturing flow charts and sometimes.
I think it shows a challenge that everybody has, which is communicating with the public is such a different, a difficult thing, because. The truth is, it's like an election, nobody's interested when something's not affecting them, they couldn't care less, so we can have all kinds of. You know, visiting sessions and master planning meetings and everything, but if there is any hot issues, nobody cares, nobody shows up, and then there's a project. And now all of a sudden, they want to know what vision, you know, for the city is, that we, that we offered to help them participate in five years ago, and they weren't interested. And I think that's a common thing even at state level, when, when policy is being developed, and you say, well, let's involve people, and it's like, yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah, well, we, oh, yeah, it's frustration.
Sorry, didn't mean to open up.
No, no, it was, it was, it was frustration that we all have to deal with at times within our position and stuff, so, I mean, I, but it's okay to vent about it, and.
And I hope you guys write down my cell phone number and give it to anyone you want to, I'm serious, I would rather talk to them than have them yelling at me online without me being able to have a real conversation.
Yes, well, and by all means, planning commission, we have a slightly different, uh, role of communicating than we do as councils, so. I mean, I think we all know, as, as planning commissioners, we're like, we don't have that active role in participating.
Right, which is why I'm saying, if anyone comes to you guys, just feel free to connect them with me.
Yeah, so, but thank you. Um, okay, we will shut them off. Okay, good, good, uh, citizens wishing to address the commission. You step forward, say your name and address?
I have address.
Leave a comment, so let three get rid of us. Good evening, everybody, Sean Keel, eighty-two, twenty-two Webster Drive.
All right, so, you're welcome. I know where Zach is, this is good, excuse me. You guys are doing a really good job, um, first of all, you're all present, I'm here for the full, right?
Yeah.
I'm here, I think, right?
Yeah.
Under, um, development projects that, you know, have opposition, okay, that's concerning the community, um, but the thought. That I heard, I was in Romulus at seven o'clock. I was playing at seven o'clock, it's possible to be late. You got a couple of feedback, the Zoom sound through the car, it's fantastic, I can hear everything, okay, so that was good. And I muted on your end, but not the other one, so I can hear that, but the variation in the comments and the participation by those board is high. I mean, everybody's giving feedback on these kind of projects, they're not just hearing from one down personally, and I think that's a strength. That's a real strong thing, I don't know, I don't know, so, just want to say thank you, and keep it up. Michelle, on the phone in the audience, it was so many different comments, this is that a lot of water concern, I don't remember, so, it's that bad. Okay, keep up the good work, welcome.
Thank you. Oh, yes, that's true, you do have a new student member, Sophia.
Hi.
Sorry, I forgot, I didn't meet you earlier. Yeah, great meeting, you show up, yeah, thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Thank you, great meeting, you show up. Okay, uh, old business none, new business none, proposed business for September fifth, election of officers, citizens wishing to address the commission. Steve Nanton, anybody online?
No, same on the internet.
No, we, by nobody goes so quick, we have it, two points, trust me. So, all right, adjournment, adjourn, move to adjourn.
Sorry.
All right, afterwards, right, all right, meeting adjourned.